10:02 AM. Moving to opening ceremonies, moment of reflection, pledge of allegiance. By trustee Wagen. Ready to begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. What a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving to roll call. Trustee Bartow. Here. Trustee Metoyer.
Here.
Trustee Crane.
Here.
Trustee Anderson.
Here.
Trustee Orsoilu.
Here.
Trustee Wagen.
Here.
Trustee Yelsey.
Here.
Dr. Smith.
Here.
Moving to adoption of the agenda, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Metoyer, seconded by trustee Anderson, roll call vote. Trustee Bartow. Yes. Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Move to community input on special agenda items only.
This is, this is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on a special meeting agenda only. Comments on special meeting agenda items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. The speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person.
Martha Flohr.
Good morning, thank you, my name is Martha Flohr, I'm a former board member, so it's nice to see my colleagues up here. And as well as, and I'm on the behalf of Girl Scouts of Orange County, I'm a longtime Girl Scout volunteer. I'm currently the Service Unit Operations Program Lead for the Newport Mesa Service Unit 404. And I believe at least we have currently two Girl Scout troops here represented on your board. And I know at least five of you in this room of the trustees have been or have girls in Girl Scouts. So there's, of course, Girl Scouts, see? So Newport Mesa 404 is one of two service units that service the girls in Newport Mesa. And we are the largest. We currently have all of the schools on this side of the Back Bay. So we have all of, you know, Newport Harbor Zone, Costa Mesa Zone, and Estancia Zone. We currently have about 50 troops, our school year starts, our troop year starts October 1st and goes through September 30th. So right now we are servicing over 600, 600 students from kindergarten to 12th grade. Our troops generally meet one to two times per month after school. And many of our school campuses, in classrooms, on playgrounds, and in the multipurpose room, all free of charge. Without our facilities, most of our troops would find it difficult to secure a safe, well-lit, meeting space, as well as being able to provide safe and social distancing during COVID. We didn't meet, we were on Zoom, but now that COVID is, we still practice some of the COVID protocols. Without our school facilities, most of it would be, would be absolutely impossible. Our scoops are limited in their ability to raise funds. Many of troops collect dues, usually it's about $1 per girl per month. And all the materials, badges, field trips, supplies, et cetera, are paid through troop funds, with maximum support of less than 40% going to, directly from parents. By way, the largest of our school money earning is through our entrepreneurial, that's cookies, cookies, which is coming, I'll do a plug, cookies in, in, in January, February, and March, and also nuts and chocolates, which just ended. Each package of cookies sold, the troop can generate up to $1 per package. And there are troops, in fact, there was one here in this troop that earned last year over $9,000 because they sold 9,000 packages of cookies, and that's trustee Wagen. She and I were in competition with one, with one another. But, but it still takes a lot of money. And I reviewed this, and you guys have always been so wonderful for Girl Scout troops and, and that during the, during the week. And I applaud Dr. Smith's opportunity to again extend to make them community schools. But if you charge, and now we're not being charged on the weekends, which is even better. So I urge you to continue to waive that, the fee process.
Now we move to our study session. Enrollment and Master Facilities Maintenance Plan, Mr. Tre.
Good morning, we really appreciate the time you're going to spend with us to study these issues. And today we have Adha Zeresny and Lance Bidnik, who will be presenting. Adha is our facilities director, and Lance is our maintenance and operations director. And so today we're going to be covering, just to give you a heads up here, there we go, thank you. So today we're going to talk about the master facilities and maintenance plan. We'll go into use of facilities, discuss the Civic Center Act, the fee structure associated with that, a little bit on the Costa Mesa Joint Use Agreement, and then enrollment trends, including intra and inter-district transfers. So with that then, I'll turn the time over to Adha. There's a clicker.
So we're just going to talk about the facility master plan. And what we're trying to accomplish here is really to have a book of what we're going to do in this district. What are our priorities, how are we going to identify those? And so what we did was, with the facilities master plan, it's been in the works for a while. It's one of West's priorities, and we're super happy to have it moving forward. So we had, even prior to August, we had enlisted an R and P for architects. And what we've done since then is we have acquired three architects that are, sorry, let me just do this. That are, we have master agreements. And so we selected these architects, and we have narrowed it down to three that we put on a master agreement. And we are asking them to propose on the facilities master plan. So even though we have them under a master contract, they still had to propose for these particular services. We can use them for other services, but it was kind of the highest criteria was the facilities master plan architect. So we'll be bringing that to you in November at our board meeting. We'll be bringing the one that we've selected. And we're including in the interview process, not just the facilities team. Kirk Baurmester is going to sit on the interview panel and try to get more participation to bring someone forward to you. So in regards to the timeline, that's really up to us. How much community involvement we want in that process? We could, in a very quick fashion, get something to the board for approval in six months. But depending on the community involvement, it could take up to two years. So it's really about how we want to just receive input, teachers involved, staff members, that type of thing. And then we'll be able to bring that plan forward to you. So we know we have a lot of, a lot of priorities of, you know, what schools want, what we think are important. But one of the things we wanted to mention to you is, so of the things that we've been focused on in facilities in particular, security fencing, it's been a huge priority. We know that when COVID occurred, we had kind of an outpour of requests for shade structures. And so one of the things we're doing though, as it applies to UTK and CAE, is we're looking at the location of the shade structure and what the expansion of UTK will look like, and whether or not we think the kindergarten is best situated now. Will still be the same situation when we have our full expansion in 2025. And then I'll just share with you, Kathleen and I both presented at a state workshop this last week about UTK and how we're trying to implement. And we had pretty much a seamless operation to get UTK in place this last year, which was a really, really good thing. The other things that we know are priorities, the outdoor green spaces. We're still working on the Ensign Plan, which is going into DSA here pretty soon. And it's going to be a tremendous project. Another is Estancia, the, what we were calling the Pool and Field, now is the student gathering area, that's going to be forward. And then we know that girls volleyball is now C I F sports, we're prioritizing that. And then we just wanted to kind of remind ourselves of things under the Measure F program that haven't quite been completed yet, which will fall into place under the master plan. So MPRs, we know that's a huge priority. We spoke about the shade structures. Teacher Training Center, so we've talked about, we have the sandboard building here now that we used up for, but what other facilities could we do that with? And then relocatables, sorry about the sound, but relocatables. We spent, and Lance will talk about this more, but we spent a tremendous amount of money on keeping temporary facilities that we would rather have permanent facilities. And we're looking at that as we look at UTK. We're looking at the possibility of removing some of those relos and building Title V compliant classrooms. Newport Harbor has been asking for a new gymnasium for a long time, so that's also on the unfunded Measure F list.
I did want to clarify something for the community's benefit. Very kind of Adha to say that it was my priority. Yes, but the board gets full credit for this. When we had our meeting where we set our priorities and our protocols, this came from the board, that we really want a five-year facilities master plan. And so the credit goes to the seven of you, and just compliments to the team, by the way. They've been working really hard to put this together, and it's just, it's, a year later, it's still fun working with all of you. So thank you for your dedication.
Does anyone have any questions right now?
If you have questions as we go.
Yeah, we'll do it at the end of each section, I think that's probably the best, if anyone had questions.
Are we soft implementing the plan until it's formally approved? Because there's some really great things that we, I would hate to see us say, oh, well, let's wait for two years, even though it's in part of our regular maintenance plan or regular upkeep. So are we soft implementing?
So I'll let him answer the maintenance part of it. With facilities projects, we've kind of defined what is Lance's work, what's my work, and repair maintenance is Lance's, and mine is basically new construction. And so as projects come up by site, so you'll recall that recently we approved a budget for a new shade structure and kind of an auditorium-type space for Newport Coast. And that's because our foundation is willing to fund that. And so we've, we've taken those projects on, brought them forward for approval, and we try to bring all of those to you with a conceptual approval, just so you know what's kind of happening out there. And then we also are very conscientious of the equity aspect of that. So if we're doing something in this area, then we're also looking at some of the needs. So those have kind of pushed forward a little bit. But the intent of the master plan is to have a plan so that we can say, over this many years, this is how we're going to face these projects in, so sites don't have to do that. So we're looking at it, you know, in that aspect.
Yeah, to add that, I think soft implementation is probably a good term. It does depend on what the activity is and what the site is, and the likelihood of something bigger happening at the school site.
Right, you don't want to replace the floor at the gym if you're going to replace the gym.
If, if we know and we have a plan for replacing the gym, for example, it's a good one, or it's very likely that it's going to happen, then we'll hold off on the maintenance plan. We'll find other projects that we can fill in its place, maybe expedite something that was planned in subsequent year. But we really do kind of analyze that on a year by year.
Thank you, and I have a quick question, one quick question. What's a Title V compliant classroom?
So Title V.
Sorry.
So if you think about a typical school, and the kindergarten classrooms in particular, they're 1,350 square feet, and they have restrooms in the, in the same space, plus a teacher prep area. So as you're looking at most of our elementary school campuses, now with UTK there, a lot of our kinder classes are in 960 square foot classrooms, which are your first grade through sixth grade size. So Title V meets those other requirements.
So basically TK should be in a CAE.
Correct.
In the perfect world. Right after we win the lottery.
And that's some, we're going to have three-year-olds, you know, in school in August, when they only have to be four.
That month of August.
Thank you very much. How long are they giving us to comply?
So if you want to comply, you get state funding for projects. If you don't comply, then you just use the housing that you have available to you. And that's one of the discussions we want to have is, how are we utilizing our schools? What spaces do we consider protected? And then what spaces can be made available for UTK and just general enrollment? It's a big discussion.
When you estimate that six to 24 months, what is that, what's that difference?
The level of input.
Right, but what does that mean, like?
So if we are doing a facilities master plan, and we intend on going to every school site and holding a community meeting and getting feedback, you know, those things all take time. So let's just say we had a meeting at every school. That's a lot of schools, and to plan that and make it available, that alone, just having community meetings, could be six months. So, or you could do something kind of at this level, where we just have a community meeting, people come to the board room, right, and give their input. So it just depends on the type of input we want.
And the kind of in-between would be the zone format that we followed, that'd be?
I have a question about the replacement of aging portables. Do we, do we have a number of, how many are unused currently? And then, I was, I was interested in finding out, how are they more expensive to maintain than fixed structures?
So every year we take a look at, so every October we ask the school sites for their school site plans, and then we take a look at those plans, and we say, how are we using these classrooms? And that's one of the things that we need to solve on a bigger issue, like Char will know. So I'm infamous for showing up at your site, and you tell me you have no classes available, and you have backpack hooks but no backpacks on them, then I know it's not used as a classroom. So I'll, you know, look at that, oh, that's our PTA room, that's our second lounge, that's our eighth RTI room. You know, so, so we need to kind of establish protected spaces and unprotected, because they're all used for some reason. And then you can talk about maintenance.
I don't know, as far as maintaining them as being more expensive than permanent, it's more, do we need to spend the money to maintain the portables? Or do we have unused building spaces, or, or buildings that actually need to be repurposed? And it's, it'd be more advantageous to replace it with permanent construction versus portable, if we need to accommodate whatever those protected spaces are.
I have two questions. I noticed on the list for Measure F funds that were unfunded, it talks about replacing the relocatable classrooms in Costa Mesa and CDM zones, but not the other two. Is there a reason for that? Because I know specifically at Whittier, the portables are pretty dilapidated.
Well, I think that was just what was on the board order. So when, when we went out for the bond, the, the board was very specific about what was going to be funded. Now, that doesn't mean that we, we wouldn't fund those things, it's just, using general obligation bond funds, those things would be prioritized with that money.
And then is there going to be a process in place where we, like, what does that look like to decide what exactly we're going to be funding out of those?
So that's what we hope to get out of the master facility and maintenance plan, and feedback from you on what you want us to prioritize. We obviously have many more needs than we have money. So.
Well, I mean, for instance, you know, OCC didn't have the amazing facilities they have now. So like, when it says construct a teacher training center, well, there already is one that we've used for our, you know, so I just wanted to know what that process was, thank you.
Thanks for bringing up the facilities related to the Measure F projects, because, you know, the board had that in their write-up, it was a part of that campaign, and it makes those things allowable. Doesn't mean you have to do them, but they are allowable. The side of the coin is, but the community is aware that this is something that you said you're going to do. So that's just a part of the conversation. We just wanted you to know that this was a list of things that are unfunded, that were a part of that campaign, is all. And certainly, a part of the, the facilities master plan process is the deliberation of the board. Getting all of the input from the community and the experts, and then saying, here's, here's what we think about these priorities, and where we ought to go, so that's a huge part of it.
Oh, okay.
Where's our buttons when we're meeting?
So I'm not going to be here, so I won't, I won't be here, so I won't be part of this. But I know in the Corona Delta Mar zone, you say, why in those two zones? Specifically, I can think right now, two schools who use portables as their main classrooms. There are 25 to 30 backpacks hanging out outside of them every day at Anderson, at Newport Coast. And also, will this involve discussion for schools like Anderson that, for safety reasons, has no doors on any classrooms, and probably needs more of a redo than just portable?
It's an internal school, like Estancia.
Yeah, but, but Estancia, we put up doors in a lot of those. Those classrooms, we don't have that at Anderson at all, it's totally open. So anyway, I'm hoping that this discussion will include that as.
Trustee, sorry. The Measure F funds are essentially, aren't they spent down after the Estancia theaters? I mean, we don't really have anymore, right? So is there?
We don't have it, we can't access, they're there, but we can't access.
But after the Estancia theater is complete, they're, they're pretty much spent down, is that not correct?
So there is an additional $88 million of authorized bond debt that we could do. However, because of the commitment the board made to not go over $18 and, $18 and some change per $100,000 of assessed value, we probably won't be able to get there until about 2038. And there'll be a presentation that'll be made to the board here on October 25th regarding that outstanding debt.
I'm still not sure what the answer is.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, so we won't be able to access any more bond dollars until about 2038.
Okay, so it is spent down. So after the theater is complete, these other unfunded Measure F projects really do, we don't need to legally prioritize things on this page because there is indeed no more funding for them, right? So this really doesn't matter anymore?
Yes.
But couldn't we?
There is money in them.
If it's a real priority, it doesn't have to come out of that.
But these were, like, per the bond, and now that money's spent down, so these don't necessarily have to be prioritized? The items on this page? What you're saying is legally, we don't have to do this list, however we could choose to, if deemed required.
And that was the intent of this, this page, for us to be aware of that.
All right, I think we're ready to go to the next section.
Good morning. The maintenance master plan, this is something that we've been working on since I started here almost four years ago. What we've done is we've gone out and assessed all of our schools, taken a look at all of the building, accessories, equipment, roofs, carpet, everything that we touched and maintained. We maintain about 2.3 million square feet of building space. This is exclusive of grounds and custodial, so we're only going to be talking about maintenance work and deferred maintenance. District Y, we, we have about $1.3 billion in replaceable assets. And so this would be the, the cost estimate for replacing all of our school buildings. What we did here was review and assess all of the major building systems, and what we have is represented on this pie chart. This is a 20-year plan, we're looking at about $486 million over 20 years. That's about $24 million a year, if you're wondering. We'll put a pin in that number and the current replacement value, because we're going to come and talk to those a little bit more in subsequent slides here. When we look at our assets, we assign an assessment number to them, or a prioritization. It's represented here, this is what our current need is, it's about $143 million worth of work. This represents either assets that have failed or have aged out. In other words, based on their age or condition, it's recommended that we replace these now. This is not uncommon for school districts to have a very large maintenance backlog. It's difficult for us to be able to get to meet the demand. So it's very common that we have a really large year one, and then over the course of 20 years, we start to win away at that with the funding and support. When we look at building systems and how we prioritize them, or when we're inventorying them, we, we get where it's located, what the system is, when it was installed, how old it is, how it's been maintained, what its expected lifespan is, these are all pretty industry standard numbers. And then we put everything down on a big spreadsheet, and then we kind of see what, what shakes out. When we're looking at prioritizing these projects, there's a number of factors that we look at. Age and condition, obviously, are one of the factors that we consider. We may have assets that are in good condition, it's just they're beyond their expected life, and so they might be a condition three where they're in good repair. But they're just 20 years old, and they need to be replaced after 15. And we might have other assets that have failed or are no longer efficiently maintainable, and they need immediate replacement, and those go on the list as priority ones. When we do projects, the economies of scale come in. So flooring projects, for example, we might have several rooms at a school that are either condition one, two, or three. But when we do the project, we're not just going to be selective for the, to replace the ones, we're going to do ones, twos, and threes. It makes more sense to do all of those projects under one mobilization than to come back multiple times. So we might take advantage of the economies of scale. Site availability is a big one, we have a very extensive summer school program. This limits the number of school sites that we can do. But we're also sensitive to where we locate those project sites. We don't want to overburden one side or the other, and make it difficult for our programs to exist, and make it difficult for our parents to participate in summer programs. And then always money is, is another constraint, so we look at budgets. Also, any conflicting projects where one scope of work would not mesh with another, or we have a major modernization or other facilities projects. When we talk about our obligation to provide facilities in good repair, the education code defines good repair. And how we check good repair, per the education code, is through an annual inspection. This is coming from Williams Acts, the Williams Settlement Act, where it defines the requirement for schools to maintain classrooms that are clean, safe, and functional. Williams Act is a good tool, it allows us the opportunity to visit every classroom and make an assessment on what we see, but it's very limited in its scope. So where we go is beyond what the Williams Act and the good repair standard requires. And we look at more of the facility management industry standards. Typically, government buildings, they recommend setting aside for deferred maintenance 2% to 4% of the current replacement value. Our current replacement value is $1.3 billion. So that's about $26 million per year would be recommended for maintenance. The Facility Condition Index is a score that calculates your current backlog of maintenance projects divided by the current replacement value. And it gives you a number. And typically for government buildings, 15 to 20% is common. We're on the better side of that average at 14% overall. Each of our schools might have a different facility condition. Each of our schools might have a different facility condition index, but this is what we're looking like district-wide. When we start to look at what good repair is, 5% is typically what is used as a measurement for good repair. However, it's extremely cost prohibitive. This is normally reserved for industries where your revenues are closely tied to the maintenance of your equipment, specifically Ben and Jerry's ice cream. If a freezer goes down, they will lose a million dollars in their revenue. They are highly financially incentivized to make sure that they're replacing the freezers well ahead of the replacement days. 10% is usually where you're looking at hospitality, so hotels, amusement parks, things like that where you need to bring in guests. Like I said, government buildings typically fall into the 15% category. What does this mean? So if we were a standard district and the education code requires any school district that uses state bond funds for modernization projects, that aside 3% of its total expenditures for routine maintenance. And if we were a typical 3% district, our annual maintenance budget would be about $13 million based on our current expenditures after our operational costs and maintenance. So we have employee salaries, benefits, supplies, various contracts that we need to enter into to keep our doors open, fire alarm inspections, fire sprinklers, things like that, and then unforeseen repairs. This would leave us about $1.3 million a year for deferred maintenance. As you see in this top graph here, up and to the right is one of these instances that is not good for us. What this means is that we are not able to meet our annual commitments for deferred maintenance at the 3% model. That orange bar that keeps climbing, once we get to 2035, we hit a critical state where we need to go from good repair to poor. At this point, maintenance is no longer recommended. We're looking at big modernization projects instead of routine maintenance. At 50%, if modernization costs exceed 50% of new construction, we're going to have a really hard time with getting modernization plans approved through ESA. If we were a traditionally funded district, we'd fall off the cliff right around 2035. Our current maintenance budget, and I do have to say, it is an honor and privilege being in Newport Mesa with the amount of support that we've gotten for our maintenance department. This is tremendous. Our current routine restricted is about 6.43% of general fund expenditures. What this means is it, it's about $16 million a year that we spend on deferred maintenance. It's within the recommended 2% set aside for replacement value that the building maintenance industry would typically suggest. This is kind of our sweet spot. And so this is, this leaves us in a, really we have enough projects to do each year that we will continue to keep that orange bar under control. This means fewer equipment failures, fewer missing days of school, better efficiency as we replace systems, for example, our air conditioning systems. We're always bringing them up to the current codes, improving energy efficiency when we do so, improve reliability, workplace emissions, safety for our students. And it also allows us to emphasize preventive maintenance versus reactive maintenance. And so we get a better control of our costs. Would you want to take questions on maintenance plan?
I have a question. On your orange bars here, you talk about $16 million we spend on deferred maintenance annually. And then they're climbing here. So are you assuming $16 million as a steady state for annual? And then, and then as our aging facilities, they'll require more. So that 16, we need to create maybe, you know, 2% degrees every year or something like that?
So this, this model is in today's dollars. And so if we're looking at a range of 6% to 6.5% for routine restricted, that will adjust with inflation along with all the projects that we're performing. So if we're looking at this chart, this is in today's dollars. And the 16, 16 and a half million dollars is flat, assuming flat throughout. That's based on the dollar amount, not the percentage. So as our expenditures increase and, or decrease in the out years, so will that routine maintenance dollar amount, but the percentage will remain the same.
So, I mean, in this, it looks like in 2035, we go off a cliff and that's because our facilities will need more TLC than we, than that percentage that we need will say $16 million in today's dollars.
If, if we're at a 3%, that's just slightly better than doing nothing. And once we get to that point, our facilities will be in such disrepair that routine maintenance would no longer be recommended. So, for example, when we have dilapidated roofs, it's not just the roof that suffers. It's the roof deck, it's the structure of the building, it's the interior surfaces.
The fun things you find underneath.
Yes.
So with that being said, what is your recommendation for being able to create that? So we don't fall off a cliff in 2035?
So if you look at the chart below, our current forecast is 6.43%, which is our current here. The orange bar would be managed. So you see the scale is different. The chart on the bottom that tops out around $165 million there in the out years versus the one on the top, this close to $1.5 billion. When we do this, what we expect, and to your comment that the orange bar was on, it escalates some of these years. If we, if we replace something in 2022 and it has a 15-year life expectancy, we expect to replace it even in 2037. And so we do see that sharp climb there in 2037, for example. That's what affects the fact of the replacement cycle. But if you look at the gray bar, what's happening there, that's our facility condition index score. And so with this $16.5 million, that, that maintains us over the course of the next 20 years. It will still be within that 14% and it actually improves the condition of our scores to less than 10% for a number of years.
So sticking to that 16 and a half, will you think is comfortable for us for the, over the next 20, 30 years?
It's a tremendous amount of work. It might be uncomfortable for some of us, but for the district, this will put us in a very good position.
Okay.
And I would say a range of 6% to 6.5% of district expenditures will keep us in this, in this category of good repair.
Thank you.
So this is probably a newbie question, but I'm trying to make an analogy as, you know, how we have, for our homeowners insurance, for example, our homes, we have warranties, we have insurance to cover certain things. And I'm assuming it's the same with the district, right? If we buy parts and then they age or they're maintained under a certain contract, is that also all factored in?
So that is not factored into this price. So when we install something, say, a roof is a good example, we install it and we expect it's going to live its full 20-year life, 20-plus year life. Usually we'll have a 20-year warranty with that roof as well, but we don't anticipate needing to use that warranty. What we're assuming is we're going to be doing the, the maintenance, the preventive maintenance to make sure that that asset meets its life expectancy rather than going back and relying on warranty language. It's usually pretty limited, but yes, we do maintain warranties.
Go ahead.
I had a question on your, I don't even know if this works. I'll just ask you. On the pie chart about the, the systems inventory, the pie chart with the 20 years and the HVAC. The, for the 20-year forecast for the HVAC, is there anything built into that number already about upgrading our status quo? Because I remember, because this isn't the last pandemic that's going to happen in the next 20 years. So getting our air purification systems kind of up to par, it seemed like during this pandemic, there were some schools that just couldn't be upgraded because the system was too old. So I'm assuming those systems are probably going to fail in the next 10, 20 years. When they are rebuilt, are we going to rebuild with like higher level MERV filters and making sure there's, you know, that kind of, is that already into this 58 million or?
Yeah, it's actually a really big question and I'm going to break it into two parts. So the first one is, this does not assume improvements over the existing. So we wouldn't make an improvement that would probably be more appropriate for the facilities department to be making. But this actually represents incontinence replacements to the current code. So as the codes of COVID, for example, with ventilation and AC units, the current code requires more than 13 filters. When we replace these units, we'll be replacing them to the current code, not just for energy efficiency, but also for performance. So the answer would be yes. When we're looking at new AC projects, they will have the latest code required and specifically more than 13 filters.
Awesome. Thank you.
I had a question, also going back to that pie chart. I was kind of shocked to see the extremely high amount for paving, which seems to trump everything, including HVAC, which to me had always been talked about as like the largest item. Why is that number so high? And what, like, can we possibly, I know the city of Costa Mesa has changed a lot of the alleyways and kind of unused spaces that had asphalt problems and cemented all of those and made them concrete. Is, what, what can we do to bring that number down?
So we maintain about 5 million square feet of asphalt. And this is about $120 per year per square foot. About what this number represents over 20 years. Asphalt has a regular maintenance cycle, maybe three to five years in a sealed code, that's right. Busting ancillary, miscellaneous repairs, crack fill, things like that. One of the reasons why this number is so high is we're, we're severely behind in our maintenance schedule and we need to play a lot of catch-up. And so it's a lot of remove and replace where we haven't. Look at the feedback dynamo. Where was it?
We are severely behind.
We have a lot of ancillaries. We are severely behind in our maintenance schedule, so that is, we are playing catch-up. The other is, we look at where we shouldn't have asphalt. We have to bring any equipment to tight spaces to be able to seal code or, or repaint. There are some times where concrete doesn't make more sense. Large, vast open spaces like laptops and parking lots, that's probably better suited to asphalt because the cost is a fraction of what concrete would cost. And repairs are fairly simple with asphalt. Imagine concrete, if we're doing a patch, you're always going to see the patchwork. With asphalt, if we do a patch, it's going to be resealed in three to five years. You're not going to see it as much. So big open areas like playgrounds and parking lots, it's more appropriately to use asphalt. Smaller areas, we're looking at doing concrete in that. But this also does include concrete repairs.
Is asphalt softer than concrete?
Yes.
Well, I'm thinking playgrounds. And many times as a child, that my knees met the playground and thinking that I've got a little cushion. I know when I go for walks, I'd rather walk in the street than on the sidewalk because it seems like it's got more cushion.
Well, asphalt is very rocky. You're going to get rocks in there. Experience. So that's why we need.
Yeah, and I wasn't thinking about the playgrounds. I think we have, we have another solution for that. Thank you. That is helpful. I'm glad that the concrete, you're thinking through that and that's part of that process. Is there any way to, I was wondering, I know there are a lot of kind of changes around HVAC and there's still some existing, you know, if we maybe update our NPRs and put AC in them at some point, is there a thought about possibly using solar for that? Are those, I, I don't know, construction, are those possibly lighter? Is that, is that something that would make it easier without as much maintenance for the roofs? Because I know that's been the problem in the past.
I'm not familiar with solar AC units. When we install a new air conditioning unit, there is an energy efficiency rating tied to that. The code does require, we typically like to install whenever we can with the cost restraint. Typically the higher energy efficiency rating, the heavier the unit or the more expensive the unit is. So we, we go with what the code requires for energy efficiency and that typically improves every year. Maybe changing the subject a little bit. One thing that we were looking at was our energy profile and what does our energy usage look like over the last 10 years? And one of the questions that I had is what is the impact of adding air conditioning to all of our schools? And maybe predictably or unpredictably, the installation of solar in all of our schools and LED lighting retrofits have basically negated the, the cost increases associated with air conditioning. So that was, that was actually really encouraging to see that.
I remember hearing that about the solar panels. That's why I was thinking that could be great for AC. Thank you. And then I was just wondering, because I know you have only been with us for four years and you have done amazing work and you're, I don't even know how many pages spreadsheet with every single item that needs maintenance is really incredible. So I really thank you for that. Where were things before you got here? Because to me, I think as your chart shows, you know, we, if we put something in brand new in 2022 and it has 15, 20 years, it seems like a majority of items are maybe in that category of being put in and then, you know, a few years around to now. What, what did deferred maintenance previously look like?
Not as good as it is today. As far as quantifiable, I don't have a measure of what it was like at year zero.
Did they do a facilities conditions index in the past?
That's not a common thing for schools. More schools are starting to take that approach. So they typically will hire a consultant for a couple of million dollars and go through the district and assess all of the facilities and then put out a, a report that looks very similar to this. And the reason being is, you know, the 3% routine restricted maintenance was not reflective of what the actual need was. It was more reflective of what school districts go for it. And so a lot of districts aren't as blessed with us being community funded. They wouldn't be able to do this level of maintenance work without a bond. And so that we can actually implement something like this and that we're getting this kind of support like we are this year. I think this is, in my 30-year history of schools, we've never seen this. This is just an absolute honor.
That is great. I'm glad that we have the opportunity. I think there was that thought maybe, you know, like 20 years ago or 15 years ago that like the district would just do another bond or something. And I think this makes a lot of sense. I would, I was wondering, not necessarily today, but I would love to see, again, you showed us at one point the list of what the projects were by zone. And I remember seeing a few in zone seven that were about the digital marquises and they weren't as much about actual like construction projects or maintenance. Could we get that list again of what those items were? And I think that's it. Thank you.
You know, one thing, Lance, I wanted to kind of come back to because I think it's an important distinction. Maintenance with the 6 and change percent, we can maintain our facilities. Improvements can't be made with that investment. And so the issue, as you said, about a bond, really pins upon what the goal of the district is. If there is some goal to make improvements, that's different than what he showed you there, just, just so we're clear. But great news about the maintenance aspect of it.
Yeah, I mean, that's actually a really good point. You actually made me think of something else. Remember, our, our 20-year forecast is about $486 million. It's about $23, $24 million a year, but this only represents about 16 and a half. That's where the facility condition index comes in. And we will always, always have more need and we will have budget for. If we were Ben and Jerry's and really needed our freezers, then this number, this recommendation would be far higher. But then we're not going to be meeting that 100%. It's just, it is very, very difficult for us to meet that 100%. Very few industries are actually able to do that.
So Dr. Smith, you, you mentioned something about improvements. Is there government funding at all with grants that we can, as we want to do an improvement, say, to some of the unfunded Measure F projects? Are there some grants we can, based on the age of our buildings, that we can apply for?
No. No. I mean, we, Honest Group applies for, what is it, modernization?
And that kind of thing.
So anytime. So we actively have a consultant that addresses our eligibility at the state level every year. So every year when we get our C beds, we look at what our eligibility is at the state level. And depending on the year of a building, there's either modernization funds or new construction funds available and there's a share. So modernization is a 60/40 share with the state when you have eligibility. And then new construction is 50/50 at the state when you have eligibility. So every year we update our eligibility. And then just for example, we have received reimbursement funds on the enclaves, on the theaters, on the air conditioning, except for year one, we've received reimbursement funds on all of those projects. So we actively are, and Wes will, he has to sign us in the documents every once in a while that are like, get us our money. And then as well as that, we're looking at UTK funding. And part of that idea of getting rid of relows and building permanent buildings is because we can get state funding. And so, so we're always looking at that opportunity though.
Okay. Thank you.
So to clarify too, just to round it out, this sixteen and a half million is what we can do to maintain our buildings for the longest stretch of time. But we're not Ben and Jerry's, we're prioritizing educational goals versus facilities. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So we don't want to end up in a situation where you have to shut a school down for a period of time because you have a massive air conditioning failure or a sewer failure or something like that. And, and believe me, it can get that way, right? So, yeah.
Aren't there, I would think there's clean energy grants and things from the state, like if we're replacing, like you said, lead or solar panels and things like that. What I was thinking too, is we're also in an earthquake state. And do we, does the state ever give us any, if we want to retrofit or whatever, do they allow for that as far as funding us for that?
So it has to be kind of, I'm not sure if this is on, but it has to be kind of extreme situations.
Newport Harbor.
So Newport Harbor High School.
Yeah.
Rebuild of Robbins Loat's. We had OPSU, which is the Office of Public School Construction, we had the head guy from DSA, Craig Rush, come to walk the building. And essentially, we were able to apply for kind of just a specialty grant. And we received fourteen point five million dollars back. And really, that's kind of like my job, right? Is to lobby for those funds, to be active in these advocacy groups. And that is definitely not outside the realm of asking for those things, but mostly in really specific situations for like seismic renovation or retrofit.
And when all those people came and walked through Robbins Loat's, they shut it down. And we got a ton of relocatables put on Newport Harbor because they said, oh, no, building not safe. Which is when the tower came down and drama happened and.
Although the tower was probably the only thing you're saying.
No, the tower, no, the tower came down so fast that I remember Paul Reed saying.
Like ice cream scoop.
Yeah, he's, I remember him saying in public, oh, my gosh. One wood, two point four shake and that thing would have been on the ground. Yeah, he, it was in bad shape. But then you got the retrofitting funds and we redid and we twisted a little of the Measure A. At that point, we didn't have Measure F. So that's a situation where you had to shut a building down and you had to do it. We learned and went, we don't want to do that ever again. So thank you for what you're doing now.
Any other questions? And I know there were people in the audience who came to give comment and unfortunately, we missed that window. So please send us emails and we'll make sure we add that to our discussions. All right, next section. Use of facilities.
All right, another fun topic. What the use of facilities are governed by is Ed Code thirty-eight, one thirty-four. And this declares that all school districts need to make our facilities available for civic centers, available to the public, and that we can charge a fee to reimburse the district for the cost of the facilities. We're going to break these down into three major sections. The first is, who can use our facilities? The second is, how do we calculate our fees? And then finally, what fee categories are appropriate for the user groups? First off, to talk about which types of groups use our facilities. This first group is us. We use our facilities, we have after-school programs, we have joint use agreements with both cities in Newport and Costa Mesa. Typically, these are people that are doing things for the benefit of our students. Our students are engaged in these, it's our school programs. We don't charge fees for our own use. But we do request the school sites to put in the permits, especially for after-hours activities. So we know what's going on at the school sites. We can plan and coordinate maintenance activities a little bit better. If there's a school event, we avoid conflicts with outside users requesting our same facilities. The next group here is people that, these, this represents people that are like us, but not us. This can include our school-connected organizations. We added a category feeder programs last year in the updated board policy. PTAs, PTOs, parent groups, boosters, people that are here to support our students and our schools. Nonprofit community groups, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. And then youth, organized youth sports leagues that charge a nominal fee of less than sixty dollars per month. This is all derived from the education code. We can charge, and this is the board's decision, up to the direct cost reimbursement rate that the board decides. Or we can elect to charge less than. This is just a representation of what our policy reads and is a reflection of the education code. The next group is similar, but these are people that don't quite.
Real quick, I've heard from a lot of our user groups that they've been having, especially PTAs, they've been having challenges using that booking software. Do we have it? Facilitron? Yeah. Was that something that we had to update for them on? Because they were, they had, very few sites had figured out how to book sites for PTA meetings without getting charged like, you know, a high amount of money.
It's something that we could look into and work with them on that?
I think all, I think Newport Harbor figured it out. But I'm still hearing all the other sites are having difficulties.
Okay, okay, I can follow up on that.
Chuck, didn't you have a workaround already that you've discussed with some of the PTAs? Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, it sounds like maybe the water hasn't gotten to the end of the row there. There was a, we talked about, you know, specifically what to put in a box so that they wouldn't feel like they had to be charged. So we will work on that. Thank you.
User code.
Okay, okay, good. Yeah, thanks. Thanks. I think maybe messaging it one more time to the PTAs would be great. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I have a follow-up question to that one around the Girl Scouts. I thought that I heard Martha say that Girl Scouts are free. Is that also on the weekends?
If we have to bring in staff, we may charge a custodial servicing fee.
Okay, so there is a fee to use them on the weekends.
There may be a fee.
I just wanted to make sure because I thought I heard her say that it was free and I was like, it wasn't free for us, so we didn't use it.
This year, because of the new process for the Facilitron, it is actually free this year.
We were told it's not free.
I'm going to, I'm going to get into, I'll get into that a little bit in a subsequent slide. Any other questions before I continue?
Thank you. And I'm just wanting to remind everyone, since our president isn't here, that we can't get into a dialogue with the audience. We appreciate the information, but we can't get into the dialogue with the audience and we'll take care of it. So it's all good.
I, when she comes back though, I think we have very different topics that we're talking about and our public comment window was about forty-eight seconds. So I would love if, as we have each section, like, I think people, some people might want to speak on facility use. Some people might want to speak on transfers. And we, it was a very short window of time. So Michelle's unfortunately not here to hear that. But to me, I think that's a respectful use of people's time that have been here maybe since a minute after that ended.
We've often taken public comment at different parts, different times in our agenda. So when Michelle comes back, I think we could discuss that as a separate issue. Different topics.
Can I ask a follow-up, Lance? So is it free on weekdays, the school sites for the Girl Scouts?
As long as we don't have to bring, well, our, our old policy. So our previous policy stated that essentially any time that we have to bring staff in that isn't already scheduled to be on site, then we could charge a custodial servicing fee of a minimum of three hours at fifty dollars an hour.
Okay, because they were asking me, I'm trying to figure out what to tell them. If weekday is better than weekend or are they the same or still a fee?
So as long as we had custodial staff that was already on site, they were going to clean the room anyways, we wouldn't charge the custodial servicing fee. But we've changed a few things.
So it might make sense to do weekday.
So we've changed a few things and I'll get to that in another slide. I'll probably answer that question a little bit later. Okay, so this group is, this is representative of people that aren't quite like us. They either charge a fee for participation. They may have selection of who participates based off of skill rather than everybody plays mentality. But these are still nonprofit organizations. These are people that are here for our kids and the kids in our communities.
Would you say that again? My brain did not process.
Nonprofit groups.
Thank you.
That are here for the benefit of our, our youth, community youth.
Thank you.
Again, we may charge up to the direct cost reimbursement.
Are we doing questions at the end or should we do them interspersed? Because I have a few on these, those slides.
Let me get to two more slides and there's a chart. It puts all this up on one visual. A special category here is for religious organizations. And religious organizations for the conduct of church services. The Ed Code is very explicit. We must charge at least the direct cost for these organizations for the conduct of church services, of which we have a few in our district. And then finally, it's everybody else. And this is representative of for-profit organizations that are not using their proceeds for charitable purposes or for the benefit of NMUSD. Any events where an admissions fee is charged and the organization is keeping those proceeds, this does not include our boosters and our school-connected organizations that are using that to fund other student programs. But this could also include tournaments, travel ball teams, club teams. The Ed Code is very explicit for these where a, a, there is a charge for the event and that charge is not being used for a charitable purpose, we must charge a fair market rate. And so that is explicit. This chart kind of summarizes each of these categories. And this is presented to you for information. Note a few special things about this. We can move groups within the use categories A through C. And so for all of these organizations, we shall make our facilities available. We may charge no more than the direct cost of reimbursement or no fee at all. If we wanted to move certain groups into other categories, that is perfectly legal and within your right to do. If we, as we go down this chart, we look at whether or not each of these groups shall or shall not, may, have access to our facilities. Can we waive the facility fee for these groups? Can we reduce the amount or charge up to the direct cost for reimbursement? Or can we charge them up to fair rental value? And you see, the only categories where we can charge fair rental value would be for religious services or for the for-profit groups, the other youth-serving community nonprofits. We cannot charge more than the direct cost reimbursement. What is within the board's ability to do? Within columns A through C, you can designate which group would fall into which category. You can designate which group or groups within the confines of this chart we can waive the facility fee for. But this would apply to every user in that category. We cannot, the Ed Code is explicit in this, we cannot make special accommodations for individual groups. They must fall into one of these use categories. So this chart kind of puts it into perspective of what each of the major categories are. And this would be extremely helpful for our department when we decide which groups fall into which category and then what the appropriate fee would be. Do we get any questions? I'll pause for questions here.
I'm fast.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is this chart on our question?
This is not.
What, what is it waiting for?
Further action by the board to adopt the, one, to adopt the fees, the updated facility use fees. And then also, we would like to know, because you do have the ability to identify which groups, we would want to know which groups you would feel would be appropriate for each of the categories.
Thank you very much.
Everyone's here with other ones. Krista? Oh, I thought you were going to tell the board your first. I go first. Okay, so just to clarify, we, between the groups of A through C, we can determine, our board will determine who follows, who falls in those. Okay, and then on the percentage that we charge, is it best to say, okay, we will charge X dollars as it goes with like CPI or something like that or some kind of inflation index? So that we are not just stuck on sixty dollars and then like sixty dollars like ten years from now or even probably like in three months is not what it is? So we can make sure that we're, we're still getting, you know, fairly compensated for that.
So what our previous policy defined for increasing the fee was to CPI. And that policy hadn't, or the fees had not been updated since two thousand and six. What the Ed Code states now is there's a very defined process for calculating the fees and it's not the CPI. It's what our actual direct cost for reimbursement is. And that's the process that we follow for this. So we'll be doing subsequent studies, fee studies, and bringing back to the board. We can do it every three to five years, whatever we determine is appropriate.
Okay, so for our user groups, if we do the direct costs, they probably will be charged something different annually?
They could be. And what a lot of districts also do when they're updating a new fee schedule is they don't make the user groups take the hit all at once. They might stretch it out over three to five years. So you have a smaller incremental increase and it allows the user groups to adjust. And then at the end of that period, we can redo the fee study and reassess what our fees are. One of the recommendations, and I'll get to this, is that we re-look at our theaters after one year and maybe update that fee because we don't have a lot of experience in our theaters.
I'm just thinking of for the user groups to budget what they're going to have to pay and then obviously what they're going to have to then charge the people to be a part of that group.
Yep, yeah, and it's, it is part of the discussion as far as what, what we feel that our, our community can stomach and what would be palatable or what would end in a revolt.
Yeah, and I'm on both sides where I'm a user group and I like that. And then yet, I'm also have my duty here to make sure that we are not losing money to our groups as well.
Yeah.
So Lance, the board could then determine that for this group, it would be eighty percent of direct cost, something like that, if they chose to?
Yes, as long as we're not charging more than the direct cost, you do have the ability to reduce whatever that fee is. Or even, you know, we can promote, say, Group B over Group C. And so when we have somebody, an organization that maybe they, they charge more than the nominal fee, we would really want to prioritize the groups that are charging only the nominal fee. It makes it easier for our families to participate. We can discount for one of these columns even further than we do, say, column B gets a discounted rate for the direct cost versus column C. So that's an option as well.
And then the only ones we can charge more to are religious.
We have to charge.
Have to charge more.
We have to charge at least our direct cost rate. We cannot discount that. And then the other is for any for-profit. We have to charge the fair rental value.
They came in in a movie on one of our sites.
Yeah, and so then you said, sorry, so many questions, but for rental value, is that determined by, what's that determined by? Just taking like what a theater would rent out in this Costa Mesa and then charge that?
So we looked at our surrounding districts to see what they charge for fair rental value. And we looked at what our direct cost reimbursement rate is. And we, we settled on a number. It's basically double what the direct cost reimbursement rate is. And it's, it lands within a deviation from the county average that our typical direct cost reimbursement rates do.
Okay, direct cost. So our comparables are district buildings in Orange County.
Surrounding districts.
Not, or surrounding areas.
Surrounding K-12 districts.
Not like I'm, I'm having a privately funded Seagerstrom Hall.
No, yeah, correct, correct, correct.
And you have slides coming up. It'll show the implementation. So it'll make a lot more sense when you do those, I think. I think there are other questions, so.
Yes, trustee Yerzeli, trustee interesting.
And I think you just answered it. It sounded like you are going to do an analysis that would show, like I'm trying to figure out how much we are losing by not charging religious groups the fair rental value. So right now, we're charging them the direct, but we can charge them the fair rental. But it sounds like you're about to do that analysis that would show how much, because if there's only like one church doing it, but if there's fifty churches doing it, then that could be a great call, you know, benefit to us to charge the rate.
And that could be. For example, if he, if we wanted to define column D as a fair rental value, and that was the direction of the board, then we would assess those properties to the religious organizations. In addition to the revenues that we receive, religious organizations typically are good users. We would like to have them on our schools because they, they keep an eye on things on Sundays when people aren't normally around. And generally, they take really good care of our, our properties. And so we, we do like having them around.
That differential is worth pursuing.
Yes.
It still would be fiscally responsible of us to consider it.
And we could look at that.
Trustee Anderson.
Thank you. Following up on that, I have a, a kind of a different perspective on that. For D specifically, I know a lot of our church partners then also give back to our schools. So I think for me, I have a lot of questions about just what the nominal fee is for each of these categories. Is the nominal fee the same? The nominal fee is used very broadly. I'm not sure what that means in relation to maybe religious organizations versus column B.
So the nominal fee is specific to nonprofit youth sports organizations. And so what the ed code says is a nonprofit recreational program that charges a nominal fee of not less, not more than $60 per month. And it's specific for, per participant. And that's specific to athletics. The, the rest of them, the question would be whether or not they charge a gate fee, for example, and what they do with that money. So we always say, follow the money and you see what type of user group they are. If it's a nonprofit organization, by definition of the IRS term, then they're a charitable organization. Therefore, our boosters, our school-connected organizations that are nonprofits, nonprofit youth sports groups, people like that. They will use their net proceeds to fund their activities and therefore it's going to charitable purposes. When it's a for-profit business, we, we have businesses that operate on our school campuses that keep the revenues. And they are not a nonprofit company. That's column E. And so for these organizations that are running businesses, they're leasing our properties for profit, for their profit. And then not for the benefit of NMUSD, financial benefit.
So there are possibly maybe three different groups? Cause I know there's, there's nonprofit and then there's club sports and then there's for-profit. And right now, to me, it looks like we're including club sports with nonprofit, but they wouldn't fit what you just shared, right? About, I mean, they're more than $60 a participant. There's, do we need another column or?
That would be column C. And so for youth sports events or leagues that charge more than a nominal fee. Or they might have other rules like participation rules that don't quite fit like what we, we are not selective in who participates in school. Therefore, we want to encourage those groups in column B where they're not selective, where they're not charging more than a nominal fee. That's column B for the nonprofit groups, the club teams, those, those sorts of people that are charging maybe more than a nominal fee or have other selection criteria. They fall into category C. And then it's still up to the direct cost reimbursement.
How do we define that though, between the athletic feeder programs and the league that charges more? Like, that's a nebulous. I mean, like someone could say a club team is a feeder program.
Our feeder, our feeder program, we have a process for identifying feeder programs and it's similar to our process for identifying school-connected organizations. So if you are a registered booster for Corona Del Mar, for example. Jeff Trader's office maintains a list of the approved school-connected organizations. Similarly, our recently approved board policy requires the high schools to conduct a similar exercise for identifying feeder programs. And that list is, is maintained by Terry Torres in secondary. So there is a process that we, we utilize to identify who the feeder programs are.
And then are those fees going back towards the fields for those groups that are athletically related? Where does, what does that money go towards?
I'll give two answers on that. The first answer is what's required. And it is required, any monies that we accept need to be expended on the maintenance of these facilities. If we collect $30,000 from AYSO Soccer, for example, that doesn't mean that we spend $30,000 on the field that they use. But it needs to be spent on facilities maintenance and we need to show that. The second is more personal. I think it's just absolutely dreadful that we would collect money from user groups and then turn around and offer them dilapidated facilities to use. I, I think that we are not doing a service to our community by doing that. So that's, that's, that's my two cents.
I would agree with that. And then how do, how is it decided which groups have their fees waived and which don't?
That is a result of what this chart will reveal. If, for example, we say boy and girl scouts, we want to waive that fee. But we don't want to waive that fee for nonprofit youth activities. We can move boy scouts, girl scouts from column B to column A, or we can elect to waive the fee for column B altogether. Like I said, we can move each of these groups between columns A through C. Except we don't, we don't want to move out of column A into column B or C because we don't want to charge our own people. But we can also assign whatever fee the, the board feels appropriate for each of these categories.
And is there a, is there a list I've never seen? Who we're charging, who we're not charging? I'm very interested to see.
So we don't, we don't want to base it based off of the individual organization. So we might say, well, troop 404 is no fee, but troop 512, there is. Or AYSO 68 is, is no fee, but this one is, we don't want to make it based off of individual groups. The result of this study would be to identify the groups or the categories of the users and put them in the proper columns. And then define or decide which fee is appropriate or no fee for each of those groups. And then all of the user groups will fall into their respective columns.
Thank you. Trustee Yelsey and then trustee Matry. And then I think we'll try to finish this section and take like a five minute reset back.
So just for clarification, like right now with our ELO process and after-school programs, are those groups being charged?
That's ongoing conversation. So we are trying to partner with both city of Newport and Costa Mesa. So we have like Costa Mesa Rocks at our, our Costa Mesa sites. That's an extension of our educational program. So in column A, it's a classroom-based activity. It's an after-school activity for tutoring or other classroom activities. There would be no fee for that. The challenge comes when we look at organizations that are for-profit and they're keeping the revenues. Because the ed, ed code is very direct in stating that for those organizations, we must charge the fair market rate. And so it, it does create a little bit of a situation where some of our schools are participating with for-profit groups to provide the services versus other schools that are either partnering with the city or a nonprofit. So that's an ongoing discussion.
Okay. So we have those programs in some of our schools, mostly on the West Side, not others. So if other schools are doing similar programs, will we waive the, if, if we're waiving them for the schools where we're doing the programs or coordinating the programs? And say it's robotics or something like that at a, let's say it's Anderson, for example. Would they be waived if we are doing that? I don't know if that's a question for you.
Yeah, I, I can address a bit. Lance can certainly talk to the technical aspects. You know, our expanded learning program isn't an add-on. We have to think about this as we've extended, that's the whole construct. We're extending the day.
Right.
Before-school, after-school, intercession. It's our school open longer. We don't charge ourselves, even when we contract with some companies that are for-profit. The issue is then if we're not offering an ELOP program at that site, but someone is doing a similar activity, that's what we're working through. Shouldn't there be some accommodation for a group that's helping us do our job wherein we don't have the capacity to, to do it? Because we're trying to scale up. We've done an amazing job, caffeine to D, but there's still more work to be done. So how do we, how do we do that? And there are ways that they can contract with the PTA. And then it becomes a nonprofit that is, that is providing the resource. Or district-sponsored activities is another way that we can do that. So that, that's the conversation we've had to allow the expansion of learning at all of our sites where we have opportunities to do so.
Cause I would like to see that continue with these schools because there are, they want it to be as part of the extended day as well. It's not just an after-school activity. It's, some people would like their kids to stay on.
And that's where we've had conversations about, is that really in the spirit of expanded learning District Y?
Right.
Like I've shared with one of the groups. If you wanted to bring equestrian to the site, eh, we're not doing that. Now you might make an argument, there's something to learn there. Sure, we don't have equestrian at the other sites. That's probably not an expansion of our ELOP program. But if it is, as you said, a STEAM activity, engineering, science, those are some of the things we're doing as enrichment in our program. So.
Okay. Because in the past, it hasn't been the case because we have charged, so.
That's our study session. If you need for it.
Right.
And maybe something we can do is to put in language that says extended learning opportunity contracts. Therefore, that would help us so that when this funding goes away, we immediately have to revisit that section to call it something else. Because we don't want to put something into place that's gonna bite us down the road when the economy comes back to its wonderfulness again, even though we're down to the bit. You guys will all enjoy that. And have fun with that. So that's a possibility. My question was, it's specific, just because we're talking about, is it this group or is it that group? AYSO is a school-connected. Recreational sports league? No. Is it C or D? Is, is AYSO B or C?
B. So AYSO would be a nonprofit group, club or association that charges a nominal fee.
It'd be helpful to put examples.
Oh, I'm sorry. There it is, right there. Next paragraph down, recreational sports league that charges more than, no more than a nominal fee would be category B.
Okay, thank you. And Little League?
Same thing.
I know we had issues with Matt, Matt Liner, so they would have been in C for sure if not D. But is Pop Warner?
If they don't fall into the feeder program, it depends. I don't know off the top of my head what Pop Warner would be.
That's why it's helpful to have a list.
Pop Warner organization is a different group than this football group and that football group. My big thing was AYSO and Little League so that we don't have to, we can just take a deep breath and know that our, our kids are okay. Those organizations can afford to play on our fields.
So on the, you, what are some of our, are some of our sports programs, like, you know, Little League that does have a club aspect to it? And same with, you know, like the premier select team or whatever. Is that still under B?
No, those would probably fall to C. But there's, then there's, there's two questions here. There's one, we decide what fee do we charge. The other is we want to prioritize the sport and season. So a lot of times baseball will run club sports out of season and it conflicts with soccer. So we want to prioritize soccer.
Ah, got it.
So it's not just a question for what fees do we charge. We'll take this information and update our administrative regs. And then the administrative regs will also reflect the priority of use. And it will be more in alignment with both cities as far as prioritizing the season sport.
Right. And I would think that there would be something of, you know, everyone can join as opposed to have to be selected to join and that kind of things that I would add more priority to.
Yes. So the, I'd have to look again at the Costa Mesa, but that's how the Newport Beach Community Use Program is set up. Where they, they give the prioritization to the groups that, that allow all kids to participate.
And then other quick question, you might have said this, but new, like, so for the city of Newport Beach that does their ACE programs on our campuses, do we charge the city of Newport Beach anything?
If, typically it's an extension of our, our own programs and we're partnering with them. Or we do have a joint use agreement with the, or joint powers agreement with the city of Newport Beach. That's similar in some respects to the Costa Mesa. So no, we do not charge them.
Okay.
I do recall Spencer Covert, our legal, legal counsel, having a list, a registry of the B, the nonprofit, right? Because they have to somehow qualify and we have a list of that. So I know trustee Anderson was asking about a list. And I know that B column has one. Cause I've seen it.
There's, there's.
So that helps identify and clarify who, who qualifies for that, that nonprofit, right?
There, there is a, well, there's two. One, the list I believe you're referring to is actually the registry of school-connected organizations. So boosters that are registered in the state of California. We do, there, that list is available through the state. But we also, for our nonprofits, we require that they're registered as a nonprofit in the state of California, not just federally. And so we have access to that information as well that we could check.
Yeah. I, I think this, this, this use of facilities, I mean, it's, we, we have to have a balance because we need to be a good neighbor to our local youth groups that are emerging, you know? And it's the whole child approach again. But we also have to remember that we are an organization that can't afford necessarily to upkeep these without, without getting, without charging some, some fees. I think it's great that we're having this discussion because it's important to have a balance as we approach this. And I think one of the biggest clarifications that I've, I've seen as needed was the, the, just this, this structure of this spreadsheet of A, B, C, and E. And so as long as we can solidify that and then also remember that we compare ourselves to our surrounding districts as far as the fee schedule. But also remember that we need to be a good neighbor because that's, the schools are just part of a community and we need to be, recognize them.
All right. Last one and then I'm gonna let Lance finish.
I, I think something that trustee Yelcy and trustee Anderson were saying kind of made me relook at this. And it's making me curious that it, cause this is kind of by type of org and task. They're kind of meshed a little bit. So like D is clearly religious organizations. If you're doing a religious service, maybe you pay the fair market value. But if you're doing a tutoring program for kids and you're a religious organization, then you get the cheaper, you know, just the fees, you know, kind of thing. But what if, because her example was making me think, what if you're a company that's coming and doing a STEAM activity for $40,000 that the PTA is paying for? You should be paying, but it should be, but it shouldn't be. I mean, cause then you're getting, you should pay some part of a fair market value because you're coming in and making a bunch of money off of the district. So some classification that it's by organization type, maybe over task? I don't know, something. Because I'm just seeing that there might be some money not recouped from religious organizations sometimes and then businesses sometimes that are, might be doing an educational activity. But just to make sure that we get the maximum out of those.
This sounds like something that we'll have to review at a later date to come up with.
But it, it's really important for us to hear your thoughts.
Yes.
So the team can prepare something for your consideration. Really big outcome for today. It's just that, right? To hear what you're thinking so we can craft something that you can consider in a regular meeting. So keep it up.
So are we thinking that will be like in the next six weeks? What is the timeline on that?
I'm ready to go.
I think the hardest thing is getting the seven of us together.
So is this in a normal board meeting?
This would be at a regular.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, regular board meeting.
Are we ready to move to the next?
Yes.
Okay. So how do we calculate the fees? The ed code defines the, the way that we calculate the fee. And we've changed a few of our terms accordingly. So whereas we used to refer to it as nonprofit and for-profit, we're now talking direct cost reimbursement and fair market, fair rental value. And so for example, the direct cost reimbursement is exactly what it says. This is what it costs for us to maintain and operate our program. It includes employee salaries for employees that are involved in overseeing the Civic Center Act. Custodial staff overtime for after-hours events, our utilities. We did not include the cost of maintenance. That's actually a separate section. And the benefit of adding the maintenance was so negligible that we just didn't, we decided that it wasn't really gonna make a difference here. There's some nuance with, with the code as to who we could charge maintenance. And it, it's more confusing than anything. And since there wasn't that big of a financial difference, we opted not to include it. We took this information, all the utilities and salaries and everything, our operational costs. We came up with what our direct cost rate is. We compared it to our surrounding districts. Our board policy changed a few things. So for example, we removed the three-hour custodial servicing fee. And instead, we baked that into the overall cost of the program. So that's no longer, we had a three-hour minimum custodial servicing fee if the event was after school hours. And we didn't have custodial staff already as. was after school hours, and we didn't have custodial staff already assigned. We also removed the three-hour minimum for permits. So we had a lot of confusion on those items. And again, we looked at our neighbors to see what they were charging compared to our current rate and our proposed rate. The conclusion there is our rates are much lower currently than our, our neighbors, and our proposed rates are largely lower than our neighbors, with a couple of exceptions which I can get into. So this next is a summary of all of our facilities that we would like to make available. The green column there is what our current rate is, the blue in the middle is what the proposed rate, and that is our direct cost reimbursement rate. And then the county average. A couple outliers here. You'll notice that our pool is about double. Our pools are about twice the size. So most schools have 25-meter pools, we have 50-meter pools. Our theater is substantially lower, and like I said before, we do want to re-explore this probably within the first year. We just don't have a lot of experience with our theaters, because these have not traditionally been available. We have started inviting programs. The East Bluff Children's Academy, for example, they, they were able to lease the, I'm sorry, I don't want to confuse lease and fees. They were able to rent the theater at Corona del Mar from us over the summer. We also had programs at Costa Mesa High School, and we anticipate to continue offering that when our facilities are available. Again, most school districts do not charge their full direct cost reimbursement rate. This is the county average of all of our surrounding schools, including Irvine, Capo, Garden Grove, Los Alamos, Huntington, Union. And we're pretty much lower in just about every category than they are. Where do we go from here? The board can opt to adopt the full direct cost reimbursement rate, or a percentage, or discount for certain user groups. And so this, at this time, is just for information. These are the rates that we can charge. If the board chooses to adopt a lower rate, you are more than within your abilities to do that. Another thing, as I had mentioned, a lot of school districts, when they adopt a new fee schedule, they don't take the hit all at once, especially since we haven't updated our fee schedule since 2006. This would be punitive for our community. We can do it over three or five years. However, we want to do this to soften the blow to the user groups and allow them to budget accordingly. For example, this is what a three-year implementation plan would be if we were to adopt the full direct cost reimbursement rate. You'll see the, the common areas that we use for our user groups are the athletic fields, which are our soccer fields, and the youth baseball softball fields. And so those rates would be going up quite considerably, especially the soccer fields from $9 to $34 an hour per field. A three-year implementation would increase that $8.41. A five-year implementation would increase that by about $5 a year. Again, these are just examples. This isn't what we are proposing at this time.
So the board would, would choose a three or a five-year option, or the two options would be available for the groups?
It's, you can, you can choose any option that you desire. This is your decision as far as what we are charging. The only thing is, we cannot charge more than the direct cost reimbursement rate. How we decide to implement this is completely up to, up to the board.
So they're more than three. You could implement immediately.
Right.
We have a three and a five, you could make it a seven, you could make it 11, right? I mean, so the board really has a chance to say how long they want to draw it out, if they want to draw it out at all.
And this has to do with those organizations that fall under the category of being charged a fee.
Correct.
So we don't have to argue about AYSO, because they're not, so we'll keep moving.
Well, AYSO could be charged a fee.
If they had a tournament that was something special.
They could be charged up to the direct cost reimbursement, but for, and this will come in the subsequent slides, the joint use agreements.
How about which, which column?
Column.
Just to help the public.
C and up?
So for, for the question of AYSO conducting normal practices and games, they would be column B. They're a nonprofit youth sports organization that charges less than a nominal fee. If we get into the club sports, where they're charging more than a nominal fee, then they move to category B, I mean, C. But again, we can move these organizations within these three columns as well.
We do that.
Yes.
So looking at this, where we've got fair market for some things, we are currently higher, and fair market is lower, do we have anything that says in three years what the delta in revenue is? Do we get more revenue? Does it break out the same? Because if we've got softball that's maybe over market, but then the pool, which is, we could, you know, do higher, what does that work out to?
So we can do revenue projections, once we know what fees we're going to charge.
Got it. President Barto, could we, at this point, get feedback from the, our public as far as, I guess, the, the fee structure and all that? If there's time for input?
I'm not doing that in the CDM, we don't typically do that in our studies.
Who are the biggest users of classrooms and lecture halls and, yeah, classrooms and lecture halls that would use the fair market rate? Like, what, who's?
Nobody comes to mind off the top of my head.
Okay, because for those ones, so they're not really used by people that would be paying the fair market rate?
Normally, our classroom, can I say this? Teachers are a little territorial over their space.
Hey, we're recording this, man.
We want to respect, how's this, we want to respect their classroom. Normally, it would be like parent organizations that want to have a PTA meeting or a booster meeting in a classroom.
They would never have to pay the fair market.
No, they would not pay the fair market.
Right? So I'm trying to figure out, because those are the two biggest sort of decreases in the proposal. The classroom decrease to $21, and the lecture hall decrease to $21 for the fair market ones. I'm trying to figure out who would ever use the fair market one, and those seem super low if we were trying to monetize it. I'm just curious who that ever applied to.
Trustee Arsoya, I believe this last summer, we had a student leadership institute that used our lecture hall at CDM.
Ah, yeah.
I forgot the name of it, but it, that was.
If I could also share, at the secondary level, you on occasion have college board whole push-in. So we have SAT, and they will use nothing but classrooms, and at times lecture halls and other spaces. So if you think about some of the tutoring companies also, like Kaplan, that might come in, and so I don't know that you'd see it as much in elementary as you would in the secondary setting.
Okay, so those are the ones that would be paying fair market price?
Yes.
Or the direct cost?
They would be, they would be charging full fare to students, and so we would be charging them.
Charge them, okay.
Those are just some general examples.
That's perfect. No, so then for those, I would just, you know, be cautious of us lowering those fair market ones down to $21, when they were, right now, at $300 and $50, you know. So just that one was, those ones were jumping out to me as, why are they going to be so low if it's a company that's profiting? And we've been getting them.
So if you look at some of our other fees, like athletic facility, or athletic fields, for example, the current nonprofit rate is $9, and the, the current market rate is $130. There's a, a huge difference between the, the two, and I do not know how the fair market was calculated in this. But when you look at the average for classrooms, for example, at $21.80 for a classroom for the fair market, it's much closer to the $24 average throughout the county. We really, most of our use is the nonprofit groups and school-connected organizations for classroom spaces.
Like that lecture hall one is the one that really jumps out, because if we have a lecture hall and someone that's for-profit wants to use it, I'm more comfortable with the $300 than the $21. Just throwing it out there.
Are these daily rates or hourly rates?
Hourly rates. I will, I will make one distinction. The, we do have a daily rate for parking lots in our current, and our proposed is an hourly rate.
And also, do you just know, because I, I'm sure I could go back and look at the budget book, what is our annual revenue from user fees?
Very good question, Trustee Elsie.
I do not know that one.
So that, we have, it, it, one of our issues is we, we have leases that we, we have, and then we have facility use fees, that kind of thing. And so we're going to start breaking them out, so that we can have more definitive, so that number's easier to get to, and we can get that number to you later on.
Because overall, just globally, I would like, I mean, to me, it's important to let as many kids and community people use our school facilities as much as possible. So I just want to know, you know, like, are we talking about millions of dollars that make a difference?
All right, Trustee Wigan.
So as I'm thinking about this, would it make sense as a board for us to say, look at these rates and say, do we want to make our, our facilities break even, or are we going to create it as a revenue generator for us? Because that could help us decide how we want to charge our, the folks. If it's something where we decide, hey, look, like, we're, great that we're in Newport Mesa, we have these great facilities, and we just use it as a break even, and we are open and, and public for, for those. Or do we say, hey, look, we've got these great facilities, let's go and, and make some money off of them? You know, what do we do? It sounds like that's like kind of the decision we need to make before we decide what to charge.
And a follow-up to that, it's like, well, we have all of those elements from Measure F that we ran out of money for, so we clearly need money. So making some decision that would get us additional revenue just makes a little sense.
And I'm concerned, because there's categories on here that have never been included in a category before, i.e. black box, theater, and stadium. And we can get bucks for those people, because their facilities are phenomenal. However, if I, not if I'm wrong, or, yep, if I'm wrong, if I were a principal of a school, I would know if I would want every minute of every day filled up with something in my theater, when all of a sudden I said, hey, we want to have a parent meeting, and we want to go here, or no, we can't because so-and-so is there. It's, our, our, high schools are doing a phenomenal job of allowing the feeder elementary schools to use the theater, and we think to ourselves, well, they've got the theater for Thursday, Friday, and Saturday afternoon, but they don't. They also have the theater for Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday practices, and then Sunday for cleaning it up, so it becomes a full week. And we need to be cognizant of that, because the whole purpose of having zone-wide theaters was so that it could be part of a zone-wide plan. And our stadiums, it's, and it may be because it's been built into my brain from day one of saying, let's build a stadium at Jim Scott and raise the money and buy, buy your, buy your plaque to go in there, was, we can't guarantee, we can get all over our own user people, our own school people. You do not take Gatorade out on that track, and you do not put that out on that grass, because it's not like taking out a divot and planting a new piece of sod. So if we put a rate for it, in my brain, it's like, ooh, now we can go use it, and we can do that. On the other hand, when it sits empty, you kind of go, gee, we could be making money off of it. So we need to be cognizant of making sure that the facilities we built for our schools maintain their status for our schools. And gee, if there's extra time, maybe we can do it. But that, they should have big, giant exclamation, asterisk next to them that said, when time isn't open. Because, like our football fields at Costa Mesa High School, seems like it'd be great things, but that fair messes up a whole bunch of stuff that we could do at Costa Mesa, Davis, and, and Chivago Park, we all get absorbed into that. So it's just something we need to not rush to profit, but.
To, to help with that, our board policy is limiting on who can access our artificial turf fields, because we do have the EIR, Environmental Impact Report, and the district did make certain obligations. So we've limited access to the artificial turf fields. Really what we opened the door for would be our feeder programs. And so outside of our regular CIF sports seasons, summer conditioning programs that the boosters might be offering, we also have the feeder programs that are able to access those fields. In regards to the theaters, the school is part of the approval process. So if an outside user group was requesting to use the theater, the school would have to approve that use. The other is, we do an annual allocation in May, where we invite all of the feeder schools into a lottery, and they draw straws, basically, who gets to access the theater for which event. So we do have a process that allows the, the zone schools to access the high school theaters. Anything that's left is available for facilities use, as long as it doesn't conflict with any other programs that's going on at the school.
I guess I just want to hear more, Girl Scouts is a great example, but for me, there's kind of three things. Like what community groups are having difficulty accessing our sites that we want there? I want, would want to know that. And then two, I kind of would love to know, like, a profit and loss? Like what is our revenue, and then what does it look like with our maintenance staff that we have to keep there? And then turn that into a revenue projection, because we can decide if our philosophy is break even, I'd like to know if we are breaking even, and then I'd like to know if three years from now, we're still breaking even with, with all of that. Because some of these things, like I said, some of the rates go up, some of them go down, some of them aren't used that often, and they are going down, so it might not have any impact. But I think there's, there's kind of two questions, which is, what is our, which community groups need access, and what's our philosophy on break even, and are we?
Fiscal allies?
Yeah.
So what we can do too is prepare a range of fees, and so we can assume a certain percentage of the direct cost reimbursement rate for the facility users, so at least we have a, a number that we can start with, and then we can do a revenue projection at the full proposed rate as well. So at least we can have some numbers available.
I wanted to follow up on something Trustee Crane mentioned. We'll certainly, as we start to put this together for your consideration, reach out to our community allies, because that's what we do, the city and some of the other groups, say, here's what we're preparing, so you know. Make them aware that it'll be at a meeting where they can come. Besides the feedback that they provide us in the interim, they'd be able to come to the meeting where we're actually voting on these things, where you are voting on these things. And they can make their comments there, either, you know, during that part, on Agenda Topic, or right before the item. So we'll, we'll do those things in preparation for that meeting, so that we have that communication.
I just want to say, thank you for adding the additional information about facilities used to the website, because I know that in and of itself was something, I used to get calls all the time, just as a community member, about how people could rent space at Newport Mesa. And I was wondering, I mean, it sounds a bit like some of the obligation will fall on the school sites to coordinate some of this, and I'm just wondering, like, yes, we have this new app or system, yes, there's, I would guess, somebody that's doing the facilities use within your department, but who, it seems like a lot to coordinate. I mean, someone maybe like, is someone part-time as a vice principal doing this at a high school? What does that look like on our side of it? I mean, it just seems like a lot to coordinate.
So on the school side, they usually have an administrator or administrative assistant that oversees the facilities use. They will get the permit request to confirm that it doesn't conflict with the school calendar. After they approve it, then it comes to the maintenance department, and we authorize the permit. What that includes is, we will assign staff as needed to service the event, provide key service. We have custodial staff that will clean restrooms, lock up after the event. The high schools will typically, the plant manager will staff for weekend events that they have. A lot of times CIF sports go after hours and on weekends, and the plant managers at the high schools typically staff for those. We do provide support out of the maintenance office, either assigning additional staff, or we have custodial rovers that service these events, and they work Wednesday through Sunday. So they're, they're here for the weekends, morning and night.
We, we also, because of our joint use agreement with the city of Costa Mesa, they schedule all the athletics that get used on our fields, and let us know what's happening, and wonderfully provide ambassadors when needed, sort of. Well, they, before COVID, their ambassador system was robust, now it's like anybody else with the not the highest paid person on the pay scale. But we have relinquished our control. But we have relinquished our control over who is using our fields deliberately because it could be a ginormous nightmare for us to, we'd have to hire their staff to come in and figure it out because it's which group got their stuff in, which group has this, which season goes here, which, which sport overlaps? I mean, but the City of Costa Mesa handles the city of, the Costa Mesa schools.
I was thinking more theaters.
Theaters, yeah. Theaters are school.
More on that to come.
I was going to say, I'm going to, I'm going to let Lance finish because we're almost to 12 and our study session is to one, and I think enrollment is going to be a pretty robust discussion and we're on the last two slides.
Okay, thank you. The last two slides just have to do with the joint use agreement that was just alluded to. We do have a joint use agreement in Costa Mesa and a joint powers agreement in the City of Newport Beach. And while they offer our facilities similarly, the City of Costa Mesa is much more involved in our facilities. They actually do all the allocation on behalf of the users. So rather than AYSO putting in the permit, AYSO will make the request to the City of Costa Mesa and then the City of Costa Mesa will input the permit to our facilities. And then it goes through the normal process. Per the joint use agreement, our schools are only our schools until 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 5:00 p.m. at the high schools. And this is to allow for more high school activities. And all day Saturday and Sunday, they are the purview of the city as well as during school recess period, summer break, winter recess, things like that. They go to the fields allocation, or the city's field allocations. Any CIF events, say, we have a lot of great athletics programs, we make the playoffs and we need to extend our CIF calendar, that takes priority over the joint use agreement and we can, we still have management of our facilities. The city may arrange for the use of our facilities without charge. And so we have this as category A in that chart where we have a separate agreement with the city. They have access to most of our school facilities and athletic areas, so fields, baseball fields, swimming pools, things like that. What's not included are things like the stadium, the theaters, things that we typically don't or haven't made available to the, to the community or to the public. With that, another thing is what the city is responsible for. So the City of Costa Mesa, they schedule for the community use, they are responsible to enforce the district rules and it's typically through their field ambassadors. They will enforce our rules for permitted activities only, they are not there to monitor our schools outside of what's permitted. Provide the personnel responsible, necessary to supervise the activities and require the, the groups clean up after themselves. Since our schools are not ours to allocate in Costa Mesa, after 4:00 p.m. for the elementary schools, we do have a big challenge with maintaining an open campus policy. And so where we might have other people in the community that want to use our schools, open unsupervised use on the campuses would conflict with our joint use agreement and it would conflict with the permitted activities that are, that are going on on our schools. It can create unnecessary liability. We have a lot of dog walkers and people that want to allow their dogs to roam our campuses off-leash. At many of our schools, we have extended learning programs that, that we have kids on our campuses until 6:30 at night, plus the after-school athletic programs that would conflict with having an open campus. The other is the city cannot and does not enforce the non-permitted activities. So they're there to make sure that the permitted users are using the facilities accordingly, but they are not our security guards. So the, the ambassadors do have jurisdiction over the permitted use. Our joint use agreement was not written with the intent of maintaining an open campus. So there's, there's certain rules that we have to follow and abide by in, in maintaining the joint use agreements.
Do we have safer risks when it rains? Do we have?
A mud line?
Do we have, yes, but do we have the, the power to say, no, city, you can't use the fields because we actually own it and you're going to tear it up even though it's after 4:00 p.m. and they're still.
We, we actually defer to the city's mud line. And so when the city declares that the field is unusable, or we've had this happen too, we had a sprinkler mainline break and the field was flooded, we would report that to the city that use is canceled.
And, and the city's been good. The city doesn't want our fields to get torn up because A, the youth groups will jump all over them and B, we would jump all over them. So they're, they're really good about.
And we, do we have first rights refusal for a group that decides that we've had consistent issues with, that they've torn up our fields and the city's like, no, we still want to, and we're the first ones to say no?
So within the City of Costa Mesa, they do have a three-strike policy. We did exercise this over COVID with a couple of user groups. There is a disciplinary process. Once you receive your third notice, then you're, you're blacklisted from the school for a period of time, typically one year.
Lance, to be clear though, that's the city's process.
For the City of Costa Mesa, since they're essentially the city's fields after that time, then we defer to the city's process.
But it's not our blacklisting them? I mean, again, you have to think about it like this, after four o'clock on the weekends in intercession, they're not ours. It's theirs. And so that's the process they.
That's the Costa Mesa, right.
Right, right.
So we have, the statement on page 27, city may schedule use of district facilities without charge to the city. What's the monetary value of this, that we are not necessarily losing because they're using grounds for the betterment of our community, but it, what's the dollar value to that that could be a potential source of revenue?
So we can run that projection either with our current or with the proposed fees? Bring that information back.
Just like a financial analysis of the, with the cost of that, just to know the, the value of it that we're offering to the cities.
I, I just, and I don't know how we resolve this, but an issue has been brought up to me by several coaches over the years of, and especially in Newport Beach because we don't have the joint use agreement, where you can ride by the schools on a weekend, Harbor or CDM, and I'm talking more about the fields and track area, not other areas. And they're empty, totally empty. And these coaches have said, they've had team players who want to go over on the weekend and just shoot lacrosse goals or, or kick into the, you know, a kicker wants to try to kick field goals. And, you know, it just made me think of, we had a fam, we have a family from CDM, Chase McGrath, he didn't go to CDM, but his siblings did. He went to a private school, but he lived here and he spent most of his growing up years kicking field goals and it obviously paid off his weekends.
Yeah, on Saturday.
He made history. So, but there are kids who want to do that and we drive by, I know people who live in Newport Beach and the trustees who live here, we drive by these fields all the time on the weekend and they're empty. And it would be nice if these, if our kids could have access, not for, they're not trying to be destructive. And I know this is an issue because, you know, how do they get on?
Supervision.
Supervision, but.
They're under eighteen?
Yeah.
But it, it used to be, like, for instance, I dated some field until it was, you could just walk on and, you know, people could condition off the track or on stadiums, whatever they needed to do. You know, I mean, played my football before it was that, but, you know, I mean, it was, it was a community area and people would go and use it.
Is that something we would want to look at a joint use agreement with, like, Newport to, to do? Because I know Ensign's one that comes up a bunch as well.
Unfortunately, when you, when you leave the campus open for good intentions, you also have to consider the nefarious activities. And so when the gates are open and the campus isn't supervised, we're also inviting vandalism or, we have a really big problem with dog walkers, just to be frank. That's what most of our complaints are, is that there's dogs off-leash and we have had incidents with dogs. When you leave the campuses open and unsupervised, then we also have to consider the lowest common denominator. People are coming to our campuses without the best of intentions or with good intentions that's just by nature of the, the activities that they're participating in is a risk to our schools or our students.
Just to clarify though, your question, this is really a Newport Beach question because we have the joint use with Costa Mesa. Set that aside for me. Question was, well then, do we need a joint use with Newport Beach? And I think the answer would be no, because we can make those decisions given the considerations you just brought up. Nonetheless, it's a consideration the board could make because those are our facilities after school, on the weekends, and during intercession, legally and technically. So it is a decision they could make. I think the, the thing that you brought up though, before was about the all-purpose and the EIR there. So that would be a consideration that they'd have to consider as well for, for those facilities.
Yeah, I just mean like hypothetically, if Newport said, hey, we would love to have your fields open to the public and we're willing to put a staff person there every afternoon for these hours and then we'll lock up. I don't know that they'd be willing to do that, but if hypothetically they would, is that something we would consider?
We have brought that up before at the city and they have not wanted to do it. I mean, we, but we can always bring it up again.
But we can keep asking, yeah.
It'd be good to revisit it, actually.
Well, that's, I mean, that to me kind of follows along with even just all of the discussions that I've heard since even before I was on the board was like, the JUA for Costa Mesa needs some updating. So I don't necessarily feel like, and this is the first time I've seen the whole document. So I think, you know, I, I would love time to review it, but I think there's also too just a conversation of like, things have changed a lot since 2006. We just had COVID and we saw people outside and using spaces in different ways. Does it make sense to have park ambassadors and finally have cameras on our campuses and do some things differently because our schools really are, particularly in my area or seven, are often the only green space? So again, like, I don't like walking by and seeing a field that's just completely not used on a weekend, it makes no sense to me. So I think it would be good to have some of those joint conversations too with both cities, because I just don't think it's ever happened necessarily. The cities coming together with the districts and having those, or it's been quite a long time.
I think it's happened, but it, we just need to bring it up again because I think things have changed in the last couple of years where people might, or maybe they don't know.
That they might.
The City of Costa Mesa has that discussion almost monthly at the Costa Mesa Youth Committee meetings with the City of Costa Mesa's park and rec, and our people here.
Right.
And we talk about it.
But not Newport.
Pardon me?
What I'm talking about is with Newport. Costa Mesa has done everything in its own lane and it's been great in a lot of ways, but what I'm not, what I'm talking about is the collaboration of both cities and the district. And I think we, we've had, it's a missed opportunity and I think now is a great time to start that conversation.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I just want to echo, because it sounds like what trustee Yelsey is asking for is open campuses where a community kid can go kick the ball when he freely wants. And that's what we've been asking for in Costa Mesa for, forever as well. So like seeing that Adams was now unlocked is great, so community can just use it when they want on a Sunday. But I think it does need to be a bigger conversation so that then we don't have this inequity created where like Newport can use their sites freely and then we still can't because it has that JUA with the city. So I think open green space for all kids to access on the weekends is, it is a pain in the butt. I mean, I understand, it's, it's complicated and maybe there does need to be more park security or, you know, a new kind of patrol or something, but accessing those green spaces for the community seems to be our responsibility. We just need to figure out how to do it and I know it's very messy. So I don't envy you, but thank you.
But I think, coming back to trustee Anderson's point, with regard, you bring up a good example, you can't legally open the gates at Adams, we've heard this agreement. So we really have to, if that's Anderson's or, go back to that agreement. It, it terminates what year? Is it a seven-year, six-year?
Five.
Five-year agreement. So, you know, we would have to, you know, either work it out with them or exit the agreement with give a notice and then do something different.
Or amend.
That's what I mean, you, you have to do something with them in the amendment or with an amendment, or if they're not willing to, then your other option, which isn't, you know, a very comfortable one in the community, is to say then we are going to give you notice for interment of contract. Those are your options if you want to work through that legality of open campuses.
Adams is a specific situation. When the board voted to fence in Adams, the board had an agreement with the community to open that school up on the weekends and all those hours that they're supposed to be part of the city, that's when our gates were open so that they had access to that part. That was part of our agreement when we fenced in Adams specifically. There was something like that with Anderson when we, the two of them, we filled the boardroom for months with putting up the fence. Now that the fence is up, everybody loves the fence and everybody's happy with both schools, but the agreement was there. So Adams should be fine, keeping those gates open with Adams shouldn't have, shouldn't go back until we've had major discussions for everything.
I would just say that.
That was BW before Wes.
No, no, I understand. I, I just want to clarify that an agreement with the community is not a legally binding agreement. It's, you're, you're expressing an interest. If that is in conflict with a legally binding document, like a joint use agreement, we've got a problem, a challenge, an opportunity, let's say it like that. I just want to be clear, we're giving you the legal position. We had this analyzed thoroughly. It was brought to my attention that the joint use is pretty prescriptive. So we got together, we looked at it, brought someone in and said, help us with this. And they're like, yeah, no, as currently written.
Sorry, one follow-up to exactly what you're saying is some districts have used like community benefits agreements. So I know that in San Ana unified at like one or two of the sites, they made an agreement with Latino Health Access, they were the key holder of the gate so that the gate could be open, secured for community use, then it closes at dusk or whatever, but that agency has that key to do that. So some kind, because you, legally, there is no agreements with communities, but CBAs are with an organization that will act as the, you know, voice holder of the community. So those are maybe an option to consider.
Cool. All right. Would anyone like to take a five-minute recess before we go?
We'll do that now. We'll be back at 12:13 for our enrollment discussion.
All right, we'll call the meeting back to order. 12:19.
Sorry, so.
All right. And I, I guess this is Mr. Trader's presentation?
Okay, so we are in the home stretch. Let's talk about enrollment, the eighties, or they want their enrollment back. So you see here, we have from 1961 through all the way 2023 and we are coming back to the 1980s. We had a high of 26,722 to the low of 16,042 and right now we're at about 17,736. You can see here, the recent trend, on the left-hand side, you see enrollment, on the right-hand side, you see the yearly variance in percent, as a, expressed as a percentage. And so those red bars are the year-over-year percentage change and the black line is the enrollment total. And so you can see there in 2021, a pretty hard year, that was COVID, we're improving there, but you're going to see that this trend, this, this negative enrollment trend is going to continue, it's going to be with us for a while, and I'll tell you why. And this is why. Live births are down, generally speaking, and they drive a lot of what's happening in our area. You add on top of that what's happening to housing, those kinds of things, we're going to see about a 1% decline in enrollment every year, at least for the foreseeable future. This is what it is. And we're not, we're not unique to that. The entire state is declining in enrollment, so it's, it's not unique to us.
Would you repeat the percentage?
We'll, we'll decline about a percent a year.
Okay, thank you.
1% every year. That's about where, where we'll be.
And actually, that's not bad because statewide, the trend had been 3% to 5% for quite some time.
Yep.
Yeah, COVID helped.
So we did enrollment by zone and you can take a look at this. I think the story here with all of our zones is we're, you know, we have some schools that are significantly off compared to 1718 in terms of enrollment. And you can look through those numbers and hopefully you'll find them helpful, but they're all by zone. And so I'd like to introduce Dr. Kurt Sur. He's with us, he's going to talk a little bit about intra-district transfers. So Kurt, I'll hand you the clicker there.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Nice to see you. Looking at intra-district transfers, before we jump into the data, just real quick, I want to refresh everybody's mind in regards to our process as a school district. We have a. everybody's mind in regards to our process as a school district. We have a application window that opens up January 15th and ends on March 15th. And then we have a, a late application window that opens up July 1st. And after we do our first round of parent choice applications, we send out notification by May. So we do a round, January to March, we get our notifications out in regards to tentative decisions and people and confidence in numbers for placement. And we do some of those. And then as we get closer into the school, the following school year, late July, early August becomes a time when numbers start to become more crystallized, if you will, and clear. And that's when we can look at offering more opportunities for parents to be provided with a transfer. And then July 1st on that late waitlist, that is a timestamped late waitlist. So people that put in their applications, each one comes in at a specific time and that is something that is analyzed based on the time of the application being produced. I also want to remind the board that just recently you have approved the purchase of a program called School Mint, and we're very excited about that. That is going to allow us to have parents sign in and apply for parent choice transfers. It's going to help us with summer programs. It's going to help us with our dual immersion programs. It's going to just really help streamline. And School Mint is going to also offer us a plethora of different ways to run reports, to run analysis that we currently are fairly limited with, with our internal software that we use for parent choice transfers. So we're really excited about that. At least in my department, there's a lot of excitement around.
Can I have a hand?
Absolutely. And then, you know, big picture, you know, one of the things we decided to do for today's purposes is to answer the question, how many students this year are on a parent choice transfer? So you could have a 12th grader who has been on a parent choice transfer ever since kindergarten. And so, but we just wanted to paint a picture for you today in regards to what is, as far as the total number of students and families who are on a transfer. And so we have the information by, by zone. Starting out with the CDM zone, one of the things that you'll notice, and there's a lot of different ways to look at it, but one of the things that you'll notice with the CDM zone is Lincoln School. And you'll see there are 52 students who are on a transfer attending a school other than Lincoln. And when a parent puts in for a parent choice transfer request, there's an, there's a box for them to put in comments. So specifically, the comments that we get from our families who are opting to not attend Lincoln are, they have developed friend groups in their after school programs and they would like their kids to go to those schools. They have been going to preschools and the children in preschool get attached to the school site. So they want to continue on. Also their siblings, so their other children have been attending that school. They've moved and they want to continue. So we allow that for continued enrollment. Legacy is another thing that our families talk about, which is they themselves attended some of the schools in the Corona Del Mar zone. And then another big one that I actually talk to parents about quite a bit is anticipation of movement. And although they're currently residing in one area, they are planning on moving to another area. So they're trying to look forward and be prepared for where they're going to go so that their children can not have to go through that transition from one school to another if they can avoid it.
Doctor Sur?
Yes.
Can I just get a clear patient? So on the, where it says school of residence, I look down and that's the school of residence?
Yes. So if you're looking at Lincoln and then you look at Anderson, there are 12 families who are currently going to Anderson School who reside within the Lincoln attendance area.
Okay.
So would be, the left is two, two, and then the bottom will be from, if you're visual, two.
They're going to the school of attendance from.
To these schools.
From school of residence. So, so if we look at like Harborview, for instance, like they have a robust preschool program, if we look at school of attendance, so that's maybe why these folks from all these schools decided to go to school of attendance.
That is one of the themes that we are very aware of at Harborview. Parents get connected to the preschool program and they put in requests to be able to continue to go there because they love the staff, they love the teachers, and they want to continue on.
Okay.
Special ed also a consideration?
That absolutely is a consideration. We do work closely with Candy Barilla and Sarah Jocke in regards to making sure that we're able to meet the needs of all of our students.
But Kurt, just to clarify, special ed isn't necessarily reflected in the intra district transfers?
Yes. Students who are in special education are, are in not, well, it depends on what you're talking about. Are you talking about?
I'm talking about, I'm a, I'm a special ed student from Anderson who's placed at Harborview for their specialty program.
Oh, for, for special days is different than like a student who is in our SAI program.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Did you say they are on?
Students who are in our, our special day class programs are not in these numbers.
Students who we move because of where our programs exist are not in these numbers. These are parent request only.
Yes. And sometimes our students who are in our SDC programs, after they finish preschool, they are ready to go into general education. So they get attached to the school site and they want to continue on at the site that they've been attending.
And I have a quick question on the overall enrollment numbers since we went by there. I have heard from certain folks that in 20, what do we have, 2015, sort of the legislation changed where we went from no child left behind to another reason. And that could be why some of the enrollment is a little lower. Do we think that that, because if, I'm just, as an example, Mariners went from like 700 down to like, what, what are we at, 530 or whatever. But at that time, that, that number at that point might've been inflated because of other policies. Do we, do we believe that? Or do we think that? Have we heard of that? I don't know. I'm just wondering.
It's been a trend though. It wasn't just one year.
How is it be?
It could influence back in the day when they had the APIs and the similar ranks, parents doing intra then. I don't see a real difference in moving from, you know, NCLB to now the dashboard, why that would trigger enrollment differences. I could see transfer differences, especially in that NCLB model. But I don't know of any correlation with enrollment. You know, like people going to a private school.
Yeah.
Because we have the California dashboard.
Or coming from a different district to ours.
Well, we don't.
We don't do that, I know. But, yeah. Okay. I just, it had been thrown out there by a couple administrators and they wondered about that. So I just.
I, I've heard that rumor before.
Yeah.
Actually, now that you mention it, and I, I haven't really seen the data that substantiates that. But I think that was something that I think there were maybe a handful back then coming from other districts, but not in the statistically significant way. More of like, you know, three or four people was enough for a school site to go.
Oh, this is interesting that we're allowing this. Yeah. Okay.
Sorry.
I think Dr. Smith is correct in referring back to API. When schools were placed in program improvement, we had an obligation to be able to provide transfers outside to other schools that are not program improvement. So that's probably exactly what you've heard from other people.
Got it. Got it. What was the exact year that that ended?
I don't know. I'd have to find out. We could find out.
Could you say that lower?
The year that it ended.
The program, I think it was like 2015 or something.
Sounds about right, but I'm not confident.
Well, cause I mean, that would make a big difference on some of these, well, I don't know. Anyways.
Yeah.
Sorry.
The TK enrollment, do you think that that will help with address some of that with people who.
Excuse me.
Just sort of basically at Harborview and at Newport Coast, they're fee based at preschools. Those are the only two, right?
I believe so, yes.
So I wonder if adding a TK will help kind of solidify.
I think that's a really good point. And that is a question, especially in the Corona Del Mar zone that we frequently get, which is, are the TK's classes going to be mixed with kindergarten in a combination? And the parents are always waiting to get that answer, to get that answered. Because if it is standalone and they used to be able to get to that magic number of 14, then we would, we would allow for standalone TK. And that's what they really wanted. So now that we are standalone, I think there's a lot of positive energy surrounding that. Absolutely.
Historically, a lot of the Harborview, typical preschool parents, the predominant number was from the Harborview zone too. It wasn't, there weren't too many that came from other schools to Harborview just for preschool. Because there's a plethora of preschools that are good to just from experience.
Back to something trustee Wigan said, cause I think we moved past it pretty quickly. But as we look at enrollment by sites and where students go, even absent an API or a dashboard, parents have opinions and perceptions about the quality of school. And that's a big, big point for us to consider as we look at this data. I heard you say something like that and then we just moved past it. But I think that's a really important point to identify for lots of reasons.
Okay. Looking at the Costa Mesa zone, Costa Mesa and Estancia and Harbor, one of the big themes there is looking at the role of our Davis Magnet School, which from my perspective really has met what it was intended to do, which is attract families to a school. And, you know, they've been highly successful with having blue ribbon recognition. And there are a lot of families that opt to do that. I do think, and I don't have the data to support this readily available, but I do think that proximity is an issue. And our families who are closest to Davis take advantage of the potential option to go to Davis. So if you look at the Costa Mesa zone, in the Costa Mesa zone, roughly 51% of the total number of transfers that are in place are families going to Davis School. We have 287 of them. And so you'll see Sonora picks up the lion, not the lion's share, but the largest number. And then College Park and Paul Arino and then Kelly Brook. But those schools definitely are fairly close to Costa Mesa, I mean, to Davis School. And that's reflective in our numbers.
Are the, is all of Davis's population considered an intra district transfer?
Yes.
So Davis should appear in every zone.
Yes.
As a school of transfer.
Yes.
I know that the predominant number was the local zone that I checked out at the last election to see how many of these people should be here anyway. And yeah, it makes sense. Because we don't supply transportation.
But the number that's interesting to me is there's 25 from Wilson, which is kind of an outlier with the others. So with no transportation.
Right.
25.
There's 25 Wilson kids going to Davis.
Right.
So looking at Estancia, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, the Estancia zone. One of the things that I get a lot of phone calls on, and I'm, and again, we'd have to go back and analyze the specific comments, but you will see that with Wilson, you have 34 families who are on transfer to Pomona and 23 families who are on transfer to Ray. And one of the main, one of the main reasons for that is childcare. We know that our, our families are working diligently and need childcare. And a lot of that childcare is closer to Ray and Pomona for Wilson families, based off of the conversations and some of the anecdotal information that we have. But I'm sure there are other reasons that play into why it is that families are choosing to attend, attend somewhere other than their home school on the west side of Costa Mesa.
And the school boundary. The school boundary for Wilson goes way over almost of Pomona and Ray. So it's really far. If you have a second grader, they're not going to walk on their own. That's, it's, that's a tricky one.
Absolutely. And thank you for sharing that. Because even like in the CDM zone, as it is on the Estancia zone, proximity, as far as where the house is compared to the school, some will say that it's closer for them to get to a school that is outside of their home attendance area. So I agree with you on that.
That was one of my main questions. When was the last time the school boundary maps were reviewed and possibly changed?
Ooh.
Was that in 2005? When was that?
Well, I can say when East Plough reopened. So.
Oh, yes.
That was 1998?
Ninety seven? East Plough opened.
Ninety eight.
Yeah. 98. But it was revisited.
Lincoln, Lincoln.
That whole Lincoln.
It was, it was in 1992.
Oh.
Because we were opening it up and East Plough, and then there was the big Harborview issue. And then there was the other one, he was.
And then we have the.
Newport Coast.
Newport Coast. I'm sorry. Oops, oops, oops. Yeah. We shouldn't be listening to you, but thank you.
So potentially 1998 was the last time.
No, no. 2000, it was while I was at East Plough or Harborview. So it was in the 2000s that we revisited. It's when we started doing verified enrollment. Because Newport Coast was so full, it was overflowing and we had 75 families from Irvine coming to our schools. So we revisited the boundaries at that point. And I wouldn't wish that on my worst enemy.
So it's been quite a while. Is the answer like 20 years probably?
That sounds right.
15.
Well, wouldn't we.
Go ahead, Leah. Now, I think trustee Anderson raises a really good point because if it's been like 20 years, that's a whole generation of time where we haven't revisited these boundaries. And I know that on the west side, we see a lot of implications of all of these things all the time. So for me, just some quick napkin math I was doing, so 31% of Davis comes from Estancia zone. And then you see 80 kids from T-Winkle going over to Mesa. Then you see 100 kids from Estancia going over to Mesa. So the implications of Davis on our community in particular is really dramatic. You know, 53% come from Mesa because it's close to Davis. So that is your, you know, proximity reason. But only 16% are coming from Harbor. So 30, double that is coming from our Estancia zone and going into the Davis pipeline and then always staying away from our neighborhood schools. So there's something that really needs to be considered around the proportions of Davis, sort of some, how the lottery functions vis a vis proportions from different schools. Because it's really, as we've seen, you know, with the recent changes at T-Winkle where we finally added things like Spanish and art class, things that hadn't been there for a decade. Because that these schools get neglected when kids leave this community. So we really need to think closely about why 31% of our Estancia kids get into the Davis pipeline, but only 16 of Harbor go. And what can be, what can be done about that long term? Cause I don't think, just even seeing that there's no bus routes to Estancia from our neighborhood is just shows, you know, proof of the lack of community from our neighborhood that goes to Estancia. So.
Public bus? There's no public bus?
There is.
Is that where you meant?
No, I mean like the, the school bus.
Oh.
From Mesa Verde, there's no bus if you're in Mesa Verde to get to Estancia. And it is, my house is 2.5 miles away. So if my daughter's going to go to Estancia, she's going to walk two and a half miles each way. I mean, that's, that's a lot of walking, which is good for her. But.
But good luck. She's a teenager getting her up to walk two and a half miles to her school.
And then back in the afternoon. So I think there's, there's really a lot that needs to be tackled about the west side community. And I do think it would be naive to think Davis doesn't factor into it. So to figure out what to do, I have no idea. I leave to you guys. You're smarter. But something. Thank you.
Although it really would be a policy decision.
Yeah.
Right? So it would really come back to the board as you change the policy around intra district choice and transferring to a magnet in particular. There may be other magnets that you create. And so how do you handle those or academies? And that really does, we would bring recommended language or other practices for you to consider. But that really would be.
Right. That's, that's something that would have, you know, second and third order consequences. It would be good discussion to have, especially as we think about what we do with schools that have a large outflow like Adams here, as you can see.
Yeah. I think it's beyond just the boundary revisit because I also think there are many other factors, including test scores of schools and why is parents move to want a transfer out of their community school. So it's really much more complex than just that.
Another thing ARA just reminded me of is in 2005, we reconfigured grade levels so that we have the TK six or the K six at the time, instead of K two, K three programs and four, six at Davis and Ray. And we undid the six grades that were at the middle schools. And now they're just seven, eight if they're T-Winkle or Enson. Another piece that kind of played into it. Looking at the Newport Harbor zone, you know, another piece to the Davis picture is that we've got 33% of the students who are on transfer in the Newport Harbor zone are attending Davis School. Our last slide in regards to intra district transfers is looking at the secondary piece. And a couple of things stand out. Typically and generally speaking, if you put in for a parent choice transfer at the secondary level, it's going to be. it's going to be granted. Schools at the secondary level have more flexibility in their schedule. So they don't have to go through the very intricate process at the elementary level of analyzing every grade level, every school, every grade level to determine whether or not there's space. So there is a lot more flexibility in secondary. So generally speaking, that holds true that transfers that are requested at the secondary level are granted. Another piece is that we know that there are particular CTE pathways and unique programs at some of our high schools that families have a keen interest in. So they want to apply to get into those unique pathways. And then, you know, one of the pieces that I know came out of the work that was being done at Teewinkle is that they moved to a seven-period day, are providing more electives. And I believe that was some of the feedback that the community had expressed is, you know, they would like to have more elective options for their students at Teewinkle School. So we've done some of that. You know, another reality to this is that if you look at the number of students who currently attend Teewinkle at a little over 500 and the number of students who currently attend Estancia, which is a little over 1,000. So it's basically double the number of students. And if you look at the number of transfers, you have 147 students on transfer at Teewinkle. And then it goes to 309. So that's proportionately aligned as far as the total number of students and then the total number of transfers that exist for each one of those schools. And I think the final reality is, in thinking about this, is that a lot of the transfers that exist within our district are transfers that are done early. And that's within the elementary school. So these are things that are moving up and going into our middle schools and going into our high schools, but all occurred early on. With a lot of our transfers, you know, starting at the TK kindergarten level. You know, the big picture is that, you know, we have 2,563 students on transfer in Newport Mesa. That's roughly 14% of our total student population. And just as another little anecdote to know, what did we do this year? Because our intent was to show you what is as far as students who are on transfer today. But at the TK Kinder level, we honored 105 transfers this school year. First grade through sixth grade, we honored 81 transfers. And then seventh through twelfth, 255. So we, this year, we processed 441 parent choice transfers.
Would you give those numbers again slowly since we're just writing them down?
Yes, at the TK Kinder level, we honored 105. At the first through sixth, we honored 81. And at the seventh through twelfth grade level, we honored 255. Total of 441 students.
And is that new transfers and not ones that are like.
Those are new transfers that were honored this year.
So that doesn't even count the ones that have done.
Exactly.
Dr. Sir, do we grandfather the sixth grade level for the middle school and then at middle school to the high school?
That's a very good question. And the answer is, is yes, but this is how it works. So if I'm on a transfer, let's say in the Newport Harbor Zone, my default is to go to Enson at middle school. And I do not have to put in for a parent choice transfer to go to Enson, even though I'm on a transfer, because we allow for that transfer to follow. So we don't have families have to do all these extra transfers. Another way they wouldn't have to put in a transfer is if they wanted to go back to their school of residence. So if they wanted to go to any of the other two zones that are available and you're leaving sixth grade, you would have to put in for a parent choice transfer, but not if you're going to follow within the same zone that your children have been attending and not if you're going to go back to your home attendance area.
Yes.
Do we send a letter? Like, how is that communicated to sixth grade parents?
It's communication that goes out to them. They receive that information in regards to if they can continue on, we won't have to have a transfer. They can go back to their home school and they wouldn't have to do a transfer. But if they have an interest in going to any of the other two zones, they would have to. And that's all communicated to them.
And it's currently like an email or a letter or both?
I'd have to see exactly all the different ways in which that is communicated. But I know that it is because that's a question that we get quite a bit. Wanted to respond to. And our parent communication is going to be so much more streamlined. Again, that's why I thank the board for approving school mint, because school mint is going to be such a wonderful tool for us to have a lot of improved communication around this whole process.
I'm wondering too for the sixth grade parents if it could be advantageous to have just a brief kind of tour or visit to their home school? Because particularly if they started in kindergarten, they may have no idea about their local middle school. That could be, you know, pretty close to them and walkable. Whereas it wouldn't have been for a kinder student.
Yeah, actually along those lines, because just again, looking at the middle school one, so 50% of all the people that want to intra-district transfer are leaving, are out of Teewinkle. So in middle school, Teewinkle makes up half of the transfers. So that is, you know, not proportionate considering there's four middle schools. So I think if there is any way that we can do a communication to the Davis students, Davis sixth graders in particular, about all the new changes that have happened at Teewinkle, about the drama, the debate team, the new electives, the new schedule. It's still not a block, which is like the dream, but it's not yet. But at least it's better than six, halfway there. But some way that those parents can know about all these recent changes at Teewinkle and try to kind of educate them and entice them back. And also for all of the zone schools, but especially also make sure Davis is included in that mix to get the education out to people. Because most of the parents that I talk to still don't know about all the changes that we just did at Teewinkle. Because I think it was, you know, a shock and they just took.
We can chip away at that 50%.
Yeah, because that should not be 50%. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think just to kind of ride along that train of thought, that we definitely need to kind of work closely with principals in making sure that, you know, we are getting their stories out from each of the schools. I know while not policy or practice across the board, there are principals who when they find out, you know, parents are considering intern, you know, transferring to another school in the district, they'll have, you know, them come by and take a tour. And at times are able to, you know, get them to recognize this is a place that I want my kid. Because a lot of it is perception.
Yep.
You know, Dr. Smith talked about that perception that we're battling and getting them into our schools and getting out the information of the great things. I was thinking the same thing along the Teewinkle lines of, you know, I don't know how many people actually know what great changes happened this year to offer kids additional opportunities. So really controlling that message is an important thing for us to consider.
Sir, just to clarify, you said 14% of our population is transferred?
That's correct, yeah.
14% of those students don't reside in there or don't attend their homeschool.
That's correct.
Okay.
Can I come back to something that John just said? It's not really a system if we allow each individual school site to determine how they're going to market what they're doing well. And so we've really got to, at the district level, come up with a marketing campaign, if you will. There's probably a more PC term, but you get what I mean. Which includes things like site visits, right? Talking about how well we do in these places and target those that are the most affected by it. So you don't, if you market everybody the same, you're not changing necessarily this dynamic, but looking at those places where people are leaving and saying, look at all the great things we do. I remember that there was a parent at the Teewinkle meeting that said, it is so frustrating, I think we're the best kept secret in the district. I tell everybody, but I can't tell enough people. Well, that should be the systems role. So I think we have to move beyond the individual expertise of a principal. They're important. No one is more important, quite honestly, than that principal in telling the story because they're there in the community with those folks. But we've got to put a system in place that helps them do that.
And this is an argument for all those people who keep touting that public schools do not offer parent choice. And that's why private schools and charter schools should be implemented everywhere and many, many, because parents need choice. Well, we can sit there with our numbers and we can say, we provide parent choice within our school system, within our public schools, and parents are taking advantage of it. And if they're not, that's not because we're not offering parent choice. I've said that to many, many parents and they go, oh. I said, you can move if you want to move. You just have to do the paperwork in the right timeframe to get on the list high enough. So.
When we see the numbers continue to go up for schools like Victoria, that the principal is a one-man marketing. I mean, if everyone did what Dr. Peralta did, I think the numbers would look really different. He's almost at the same numbers that they had pre-COVID. So, you know, I think there's really tried and true ways of doing that. But, I mean, he's very focused on doing that and it's been awesome. Those are great.
Yeah, no, I do think if we look at our district, our board priorities and everything, we're talking about expanding learning opportunities, we're talking about community-based schools. Well, that's what, that's how you build a community by building the tools to bring everyone back. If we're building these wonderful after-school programs that are part of the community of the homeschool, then I think parents and families are more liable to bring the kids back to the community. So we do need to market that because some don't actually know that this is our goal. So yes, I think that's a great idea to market ourselves, especially right now with our goals that align with that.
Inter-district transfers.
So to keep us on time and under budget, let's move forward here with inter-district transfers. And most of these, when you look at the reasons here for this, most of them are parent employment, continuing enrollment, sibling kind of thing, specialized program. Those are the most popular reasons, stated reasons for these folks transferring out to other districts. So you can see here CDM Zone and then Estancia and Costa Mesa and then Newport Harbor.
And this is where they're going to?
Correct. So on the left-hand column, you have the school of residence. And on the right, or on the top columns going across, you have the district that they'll be going to. So any.
Do you know, during COVID, like Huntington Beach kicked our kids out and now they're welcoming them again? Is there, are they all open? Are these ones open now? I mean, that's what I had just heard.
Huntington Beach, basically.
Yeah.
I will have to double check that. I still believe, I still believe in basic aid. So I'm curious about the eight or nine that are still.
Well, I think what happened was, did they not, they, the ones that were existing, they just stopped all new? No?
I think only in the upper, in like fifth grade to sixth grade. Or fifth grade, eighth grade, I think they let them stay for a year. So that's.
I must be using a different.
Yeah, because I heard that they had pushed everyone back to their homeschool. I don't know, and I don't know if that was worth more or less.
And I think it was, like you said, the fifth or eighth could stay. So there's 18 of them?
Not a lot.
In relation to employees having their kids come to their place of employment in the district where they are employed, is that an ed code or is that a policy? Because I see how, I know when I worked at Irvine, if you worked in Irvine, your child could come to your school.
Is that, okay, so it has to do with basic aid then, the way we're funded?
Yeah, a regular LCFF district is going to welcome those students. Yes, come on, come off, yeah.
Do we have a count of how many intra-district transfers have been permitted into our district? Because word's getting out now how to override our, no, thank you, we only take people within our boundaries. I'm just curious roughly how many we have.
It's not very many, it's a handful. What happens is, is, you know, we decline them and then they go to the Orange County Board of Education and they will approve them.
Who hate us, yes. I'm sorry, I can say that. Okay, that's okay. I can say it now.
So with that then, Dr. Smith, oh, and here's a total, you can see there, we have a total of 285 inter-district transfers out.
Do you happen to know, why is so many at Fountain Valley? I'm just curious. What? I know, I was looking at that too.
My guess would be.
Fountain Valley is an ADA district. So they, when Huntington Beach City said, oh, we can't take you Fountain Valley, we will.
Yeah, I had a question about that too. I mean, have we ever, have we had conversations directly with them? I think it could be worth, I mean, it would be interesting kind of for our staff to talk to their staff and just.
Fullerton.
It's a lot, I was surprised how many kids it was.
Fullerton Joint High School.
If you go over Adams, if you go to the left, it's Huntington Beach. If you go to the right, it's Fountain Valley.
Fullerton Joint.
There's two Fullertons.
And I'd understood, and this, that's a pretty big number. So I don't know if that explains it because that would be weird. But I'd understood that.
Fountain Valley, Fullerton Joint High School.
A lot of Fountain Valley teachers live in Mesa Verde. Again, that's just what.
Everyone's taking our kids.
So with that then, Dr. Smith and President Barto, we got two minutes.
I think one of the things that I just want to clarify that we heard, some interest in consideration around school boundaries at some point. Don't wish it upon, your enemy was one of the comments, but an interest in revisiting at some point. I also heard policy amendments related to intra-district transferring and specifically related to magnets within a system. We could do some research on those things to continue the conversation. We didn't hear, and probably because of time, a lot of ideas around school design. And I've heard some of you talk about interest-based school designs that might retain students. You know, so we didn't get a lot of input from you on that. So we can continue that conversation, I guess. But that would be one where I would certainly, in my experience, having done this in two different districts, say that the best idea is the idea that's best for the people you're serving. And so doing some survey and community outreach, we're going in that direction. What is of interest to you? Because we might think this is the best way to keep our students, but you know who knows best? The people who are driving them to the other district. What is of interest to you? But that was another thing we were all listening for today so we could help.
Those to me are two things that, I mean, I think we have a comment box on the transfer form, but that can be vague or someone could put nothing. So I think, like, in the short term, I would love to see kind of more specific questions asked on that. And then I would like to know also if there's, I mean, I don't know that it would need to be in the policy or it would just be an AR, that there would at least be a site visit to the principal of the school that's in their attendance zone before a transfer is automatically approved and we lose that kid for their neighborhood school for 12 years.
I've actually seen that in some policy, that's requirement of the parent. They have to go visit before they can execute that request.
And I don't think it's on our inter-district transfer form, or maybe it is. But those comments were helpful that, from the intra, maybe if we add that to our inter, because it would be useful to know if that is actually because their mom or dad works at Fountain Valley or if it's, you know, Huntington didn't, whatever it is. Instead of guessing, I'd love to know what the.
And those were comments that were on, that came through on the inter-district transfers about employment, continuing attendance, yeah.
Family aide lives in the Adams Zone and they choose to go to Fountain Valley now because they can choose that one. How do we know who they are? Because their kid's never been in school. They just drive over to Geisler School and say, hi, I want to enroll my child. Does Geisler have an obligation to let us know that they're there? Because if it's, they want the kid because they want the money and enrollment's dropping everywhere. So what would be the process?
Yeah, yeah, we do. So, yeah, we release them.
They have to let us know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so a typical process would look like a student would arrive at a different school district. And that office is required to follow the address. And so then they reach out to us and we have to release them. There's a form that we actually sign so they can collect ADA from that student since they're LCFF districts. And so that's a really tight process on the other districts part because they need to chase down those dollars. So we end up knowing.
So we end up knowing exactly who those students are.
And they don't have to put in a false address in order to do that because they are an ADA district and they want those bodies.
Correct. And most districts today in 2022 will take anyone. There was a time when districts were full and they used fake addresses were a thing. But that has not been a thing in Orange County for quite some time. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, any additional comments?
So wait, Suji?
No, just on, so do you, do you keep track of those students then? I mean, they let you know, but where, does it, does it show that we had 10 students who should have been in our district, but they're not here?
Student Services maintains those records. And that's listed on your final chart there, where you look at a school district like Fountain Valley and you'll have a number there. And in theory, every year, depending on another school district's policy, they have to refile those forms. So a district in their board policy, taking Fountain Valley, for example, would have either a policy that says they have to renew annually or every five years. And so if it's annually, they're filling out that form and we're signing it every year. So we have really good, fresh data on those types of transfers.
But what about private schools? I think in some of our zones, I mean, we, we don't have to release them, right? There's no process, so.
If a student has never entered our system and gone to, and going into the private school system, there's no way for us to manage that or know about it. If a student has attended our schools and is checking out to a private school, there's more ways for us to find that out because they have to transfer records.
So we can never see based, we can just only assume based on birth rates how many people we should have as opposed to the folks that are, you know, actually there?
Correct.
We can't say, I can't say that in, you know, the Harbor zone or whatever, only 75% of the people that are eligible for school end up going to our public schools or anything like that. We don't know those numbers.
We don't actually know those numbers. We try to do a really good job with early learning, pre-schools, you know, the outreach that we do to know where those little live bodies are, are at. But once they enter a private school setting and never come to us, we may not see them until they enter the high school setting. And so I'll disclose in saying that we had a tremendous number of public, I'm sorry, private school kids come back into the public setting this year that we had never seen before in both the CDM and Newport Harbor zones. And so that's when we realized, oh, my gosh, you have these 48 kids or these 125 kids have not seen us for the previous, you know, eight years.
Homeschools and then.
What is F V U S D?
Fountain Valley.
Fountain Valley is part of Huntington Beach.
No, I'm not.
Fountain Valley High School.
Elementary.
And well, Fountain Valley School District is elementary. That's their own. But right next to that is F V U S D.
I, I think that's Fullerton Joint. I think it's.
I'm sorry, it should be Fullerton Joint.
It's Fullerton, it just, so it should be F J. Thank you.
That's to the left.
Well, I was.
So it's Full, is it Fullerton Joint?
So thank you very much for that. Typos, well, you know me, my typos.
So, go ahead.
Alphabet's.
Yeah, or silent.
Hi, just, so it is possible then to, could we get a breakdown of the two biggest ones, which is Fountain Valley and Huntington Beach? And what their homeschool was? Where they exactly left from? Because I think to trustee Metoya's point, I have a feeling they're from Mesa Verde, from our Estancia zone. And that would be useful to help us keep planning if that's indeed what's impacting us.
Yeah, whether it's school busing or marketing or, it's 140, we, we need to start on.
Just, just so, just kind of to wrap it up, facilities and enrollment are obviously connected. And so it seems like we're in good shape as far as our facilities being able to accommodate all of our students and there's room for growth, pretty much, right?
And we're on track for TK. It's kind of scary. Good.
So it just depends on what our priority is. If we're going to meet those classrooms, Title V compliant, and I'll get, get removing relos and building permanent construction. So we did do four test sites of what full implementation of TK looks like. We did Adams, Woodland, Newport L, and East Bluff, just because of the different configurations. And I would be, I would love to present that to you at some time.
Ooh, ooh. That'd be cool.
Any additional comments or questions?
Great, thank you. Jurnet, Jurnet 107, thank you very much.